Lee Summit is your destination for big city vibes and small town charm. Head to the downtown Lee Summit Farmer's Market where local meets fresh. Then grab a cup of coffee. And discover a variety of shops and boutiques just around the corner. Continue the fun in downtown Lee Summit at a retro arcade bar. Discover your new beer at one of our six locally owned breweries. Cool off with some handcrafted cocktails at happy hour. End the night with live music and good company. Lee Summit, Missouri.
Hello, Lee Summit. Here's your flash briefing for the week of September 25th. City Council will meet for regular session Tuesday night at 6:00 in council chambers and city hall. If you can't watch, quickly catch up on city council meetings by subscribing to the council debrief newsletter, which breaks down three to four key agenda items. Subscribe at citymls.net. Mark your calendars for Harvest Fest on October 7th at the downtown Farmer's Market. Enjoy live music while shopping for fresh produce, baked goods, handmade crafts, and more. The first 100 children at the Harvest Festival will enjoy free pumpkin decorating. And the first 250 customers will receive a 2023 insulated Farmer's Market bag. Learn more at downtownls.org. In Mo.Kansas City will host a public hearing regarding Missouri 291 North and US 50 Highway Interchange Improvements on Tuesday, October 3rd from 4:30 to 7:00 PM in council chambers at city hall. Project plans and exhibits will be available for viewing. There will not be a formal presentation. Unable to attend, there will be an online comment period open through October 17th. Find more information at mo.org. Thanks for listening and have a great week.
Welcome to the Lee Summit Sign Department. We are going to walk you through our process from start to finish. We make signs as needed here. It's not like we just go out into the field and place a speed limit sign here, no parking here. Our traffic engineers, they go through and they'll do field studies. They'll send us down an engineering work order for us to go out, place new signs or remove signs as needed. Coming from the material, our blanks come in and they're just aluminum blanks. We can put our white, our red, our fluorescent yellow-green, whatever. And basically what it looks like is just that there. Throw it up into the roller. And once we got it covered, take it to our work table here. And Tim will cut the corners, cut all the access off to where it's lined up right. As far as the plotter and the software that we use, there's a street name sign there. And he's going to go ahead and print that out on the plotter so you can see the plotter and how it operates and runs. There are standards for the height, even just on letters on the sign blank. Basically what we have on the computer there is it's pretty much set up to those. And it goes through, it's got a very small but sharp needle that goes through and cuts everything out, letter by letter. Once that's done cutting, our next stage would be bringing it over here. Currently picking out the sign letters right now. We call it weeding or picking or however you want to call it. Next, putting it on the transfer tape. Then after it's taped, we bring it over to the roller. That's where we apply it to the actual sign blank. And we'll roll it through one time just to get the air bubbles out. And the last stage is basically just taking the transfer tape off the front of it. And there's a finished product of the street name sign. We'll take you out to the field and show you our process that we go through. We're going to go out and follow our sign guys, get something installed for you. This is where we check our underground utilities. Tim, you got AT&amp;T?
AT&amp;T is back here.
EverG, Google. So we should be good to go. We normally put all of our stuff together out in the field. Then once the base is installed, we'll go ahead and put the post in there. We've come up to perfect. And that's how we do it. Simple, quick.
Traditionally, we think as police officers, those responding to law enforcement needs within the community. But honestly, we are there to serve our citizens. And our citizens do go into crisis. They do have mental health crises and we're being called to those scenes on a regular basis. In order to help serve those citizens better, we did initiate the Crisis Intervention Team Program. These are officers that are specially trained to de-escalate crisis situations. Recently, we've brought coresponders onto the scene, licensed qualified mental health professionals housed within our police department. And they respond with those officers directly to those scenes where a crisis is occurring. So they can interact with that citizen and get them the help they need right there on that scene.
The coresponders are either a bachelor or master level in a behavioral health related field. They wear plainclothes. They don't carry weapons or anything like that.
I have a police radio that I listen to all day. Listen for those keywords, mental health, behavioral health, crisis.
There's a lot of officers that just call for me. I have my own radio number.
I also have the ability to self-dispatch to them and say, 982, in route.
Officers in route, 914, armed, drawn, and armed.
So typically I arrive after they've made it safe. I'll make contact and get kind of the rundown and then I just kind of jump right in.
Like, hey, you know, my name's Allison. I'm a mental health professional. I'm here to help you. I'm not here to take you to jail or arrest you.
Sometimes all a person needs is a voice, someone neutral, someone outside that can listen. I do a lot of safety planning, including family. There's some...
Welcome everyone. Would you please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight, allow our hearts to receive the kindness that we are afforded through you and keep us focused on what is best for the community that we all share. Guide us in our decisions and help us rise to the tasks ahead of us. As we focus on our duty to our community, may we convey our commitment with our neighbors. A special prayer is being asked for Fred Pickard of the Public Safety Advisory Board. May he have a rapid recovery. Amen.
Okay, I'm going to call to order the regular session for the City of Lee Summit, number 50. Before we begin, it seems that Jackson County put a statement on their website that the school board meeting would be here, I believe. Mr. Dunning?
I looked it up. So they represented that tonight, the city would be discussing the tax levy on the 26th. You've got to scroll further down and then the school district on the 28th at 7:00 PM at Dan's Berry's.
Okay. We talked about the tax levy last week and rolled back the levy. The school district is going to meet, what day again? 28th, so at the end of the month. No, that'd be this Thursday. Goodness, it's the end of the month already. That's this Thursday. They're going to be discussing, rolling back their levy. They've indicated that they will as well, but I just want to make sure that you, that the crowd knew that the meeting for the school board is on Thursday and that we discussed the tax levy and rolled back the levy last week. So with that said, could I get a motion to approve the agenda? Oh, roll call. Can I get a roll call? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hodges?
Here.
Councilmember DeMoro?
Here.
Councilmember Pryor?
Here.
Councilmember Shields?
Here.
Mayor Protim Lopez?
Here.
Councilmember Felker?
Here.
Councilmember Lovell?
Here.
Councilmember Edson?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
All right, now could I get a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a motion to adopt the agenda by Councilmember DeMoro and a second by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes nine to zero. Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda by Councilmember Edson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes nine to zero. Thank you. Next is council roundtable, items of general interest, community announcements, things of that nature. Yes, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a shout out to the chamber who hosted a wonderful event with Oktoberfest this past weekend. Had a great selection of vendors and volunteers working hard and the carnival. And I think even with the bad weather that we had come through on Saturday, they had quite an event.
Well, it wasn't that bad of weather on Saturday night. Early. Yeah, it was. Okay. I thought you said Saturday night. Councilmember Pryor?
Thank you. Yeah, I also wanted to echo thank you to the chamber. Thank you to LSPD. I felt very safe because there were so many police officers throughout Oktoberfest. So, and then also, so I felt like this really couldn't wait until council roundtable. But I was wondering if anyone could tell me if Taylor Swift landed, I'm looking at you, Mr. Park, landed at the airport in Lee Summit before the Chiefs game? The rumor is yes, but we need the facts. If you can, if you can say.
I think you ended that appropriately, if we can say. So we value discretion at Lee Summit Airport. And not saying I know, I really don't know, but we couldn't say if I did.
Way to play it safe. So I'll take that as a yes, but thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Not seeing any further discussion, or council roundtable that is, so we'll get to business. The first thing is we need to... First public hearing is going to be continued to a date certain of October 10th. I need a motion on that, Mr. Bushak? All right, I need a motion. I have a motion to, by Councilmember Felker. To, you want to state it for me, sir? Please.
Mayor, I move that matter 2023-5808, a public hearing, continued application for PL 2023-151 be moved to, or continue to a date certain of October 10th, 2020.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion to continue the Streets of West Prior Public Hearing to October 10th, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. This is nine to zero. Thank you. Now we'll go to, I'm going to close the regular session and we're going to open the public hearing in the matter of the preliminary development plan for Kensington Farms, second plat, third plat, and future phase revised architecture. Inspired Homes is the applicant. Would all those wishing to speak to this matter, please rise and be sworn in by the city clerk. All right. Applicant going to go first, or?
Hi, I'm Reagan Long. Address is 5361 Thieden Street, Shawnee, Kansas. I'm with Inspired Homes. Today, I'm going to let Hector kind of present on our elevation revisions. We're strictly just looking to update the elevations. The last time they were updated was in 2014. So we're looking to kind of modernize the elevations allowed on the homes and the front facades out at Kensington Farms. I'll defer to Hector and then I'll be around if you have any questions or anything following his presentation.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. Hector Soto Jr., Senior Planner. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibit A, list of Exhibits 1 through 23.
Please enter into the record Exhibits 1 through 23.
As Ms. Long has stated, the scope of this preliminary development plan is strictly limited to updating the approved architectural styles. If you want to call it an architectural palette, you could, as it relates to materials and just the styles, the different aesthetics that are approved for it. So the area highlighted in red, or outlined in red, constitutes the second and third plat of Kensington Farm. So this application is limited again to those two areas. There are, within that 77 acres, which constitutes the second and third plats, there are approximately 36 lots that are still available. In the middle area, there's also about a 13 acre area in the middle of the third plat that is yet to be developed, but is a potential site for an additional 52 or so lots. So this preliminary development plan would impact the remaining undeveloped lots that you see scattered throughout second and third plat and would also apply to the future 53 lots. So here in this serpentine hue here, you can see that scattered throughout second and third plat, there are about the 35 or 36 lots. And in this azure color here in the middle of the third plat is where that future site of the 52 lots will be in the future. So as you're well aware, preliminary development plans are tied to site plans and architectural elevations passed at the time of the ordinance reading. So here, I'll kind of take you through the evolution of the elevations that were approved. So in 2005, and I'll apologize for the black and white grainy images, but that's all we had on file. But 2005, we basically had these basic six styles that were approved for the development. And the materials at that time were approved to be vinyl lap siding, brick and stucco. the architectural material and style was expanded to allow for basically three model types within which each one had additional three subtypes. But at that point, the materials that were approved were expanded for stucco, masonry, lap siding, and shake siding. And this particular image is just representative of just some of the overall general improvements or changes that were made to the elevations. But again, here we've got an expanded material palette of stucco, stone, and brick veneer, lap siding, board and baton, shake siding, standing seam, metal roof details, and some cedar roof details as well. So this one here is of the Calistoga line. There are about 54 or plus iterations of other styles that could be used, which I won't take you through all of them unless you specifically want me to do so. I'm just going to show you this representative example of some of the architectural styles that are being proposed. Within each of the base models, you know, there are the different subtypes like Craftsman, Brary, Contemporary, Farmhouse, and more modern Farmhouse. So with this preliminary development plan, we're expanding the housing options and choices available to prospective homebuyers and allowing them to, give them more choices in terms of, like I said, material and aesthetics that suit, changing styles and preferences that have occurred at the subdivision over the last 18 years of original approval. So there are only two, well, I'll back up a little bit. At the planning commission level, they were receptive to all the architectural changes. The only additional piece of information that they wanted was some additional detail on some of the engineered wood product material that's going to be used. The applicant provided that and the planning commission had no further questions or comment on the material. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. There are two conditions of approval which are before you right now. So I will yield to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff or applicant? Yes, Councilmember DeMoro?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure, this question may be better answered by David. And as David knows, 2008, there was a default on the NID bonds. And right now, I think the trustee conducted a sale for the payments due. How are we on the annual special assessments on this property?
I don't know if I can provide a specific answer on the status of the special assessments, but there was a foreclosure sale that occurred for the remaining balance of the property. I don't recall the year. The land was purchased by the trustee on behalf of the bondholders. The bulk of the undeveloped land that's in sort of the middle of this area is currently owned by an entity that's controlled by the trustee on behalf of the bondholder. And the value of that land, coupled with the special assessments that are being imposed today, the hope of the trustee on behalf of the bondholders is, between the special assessments that are being collected and the value of that land that may be sold, will make the bondholders whole to the greatest extent possible at some point in the future. So a simpler explanation is the trustee's taken steps to sort of restructure the deal so the debt can be serviced by the current special assessment revenue to the greatest extent possible. And then there's the secondary asset, which is the land that's owned by the trustee that could be sold. And those proceeds would go to the bondholders eventually also.
So it sounds like it's a work in progress, a work in progress at this point?
Yes.
I mean, things are moving forward. Does this, does this NID and the default and the special, does it have any bearing on this preliminary development plan? I mean, should we be aware of anything?
No, I don't think the NID has any bearing on this decision. I would say that to the extent that there's any relationship between what you're considering tonight and I'll say the performance of the NID, this would be a benefit in the sense that this will facilitate further development of the property out there, which will take the property into a higher valuation state and put that property in a better state to produce the special assessment revenues that go to repay the bonds. So this would only benefit the bondholders to the extent that there's value added to the property from further development.
Thank you, Mr. Bushak. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions? Soto, can you put the renderings back up there again? And what was the one, right, that you were at before that? So these are the, yeah, those are the older ones, right?
Correct.
And go back to the new ones? Yeah, it's, it's gonna provide a little bit more contemporary look, and... Only, uh... Give some people some options out there. Are the fourteen renderings still acceptable? Are they, uh, all of the materials and such are still approved and everything?
It would be, yes.
So you could have, um, pretty eclectic unity, depending on what you build. Alright. Councilmember Pelker?
Thank you, Mary. Actually, asked one of the questions I was just thinking about, um, so thank you. And the other question... I'm not sure if it's a question or a statement or observation, but it, this kind of application I don't think I've ever seen before. Meaning, I've seen, we've seen plenty of PDPs, but one where it's a... ...existing elevation. You don't see these too often. Is that an accurate statement?
That would be an accurate statement, yes.
That perhaps just a product of the time it's taken to develop, or they're now opening up new areas, and it's been so long that, well, we should offer... That may be why that, or with this applicant.
I would say yes. Like I said, the, the original approval was about eighteen years ago, so tastes have changed, architectural styles and trends, materials have changed, and this one's just gonna be reflective of what's available out there in the market and preferences now.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak, uh, in favor or in opposition to this application? Please come forward. Okay, are there any additional questions from the council? Does the applicant care to make any further comment? Thank you. Hearing no further testimony, I'm closing the public hearing and reopening the regular session. Is there any council discussion on this application? Councilmember Prior?
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I thought it was cool to see the progression of houses and what they look like now versus what, or what was popular in two thousand and five in this area. And if it were up to me, I think I would go to the, I think I'd choose the modern farmhouse. That's the house I think I would choose. I think Councilmember Demoral said the contemporary was his favorite, so. But these are nice, I like them. Thanks.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Councilmember Shields, would you please read Bill number twenty-three dash one eight eight?
Thank you, Mayor. Move for second reading of Bill number twenty-three dash one eighty-eight and ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for Kensington Farms, second plant, third plat, and future phase on approximately seven, seven acres, generally located at south of southwest country, county line road between southwest Ward Road and southwest Prairie Lane, on accordance with revisions of Chapter thirty-three Unified Development Ordinance of the Court of Ordinances for the City of Lee Summit, Missouri.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, Bill number twenty-three dash one eight eight by Councilmember Shields, seconded by Councilmember Edson. Discussion? Being none, please cast your vote. All votes are in, please record the vote. And it passes nine zero. Thank you. Alright, that's gonna take us out of public hearings, I believe. Am I correct? And takes us to public comment. We do have a few public comments tonight. Um, I think we'll start with, uh, Mr. Clutchy, I think? Even Clutchy? Yes, sir. Come on up to a microphone, sir. Come on up to a microphone.
Evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to, I misunderstood about the, the agenda for this evening. I thought that the levy meeting was this evening. So I, I just wanted to present to the group, you're interested in signing the petition to recall the county executive. I'll be here for the duration of the meeting. See me after the meeting, and, uh, please sign our petition. You're interested, if you're a registered voter resident of Jackson County.
Thank you. Alright, um, then Mr. Bob Glows? Blaws, I apologize if I mispronounced that.
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, talk a little bit about the tax levy. Uh, I was not here last week, but I did just look at the presentation, and based on the staff recommendation, uh, of the new levy which was rolled back, um, and the other data that was provided, uh, it shows that the total assessed value less new construction and improvements, uh, had an increase of thirty percent. And the rollback was reduced by only fifteen percent, leaving a surplus or an increase in revenue of seventeen percent. And state law is pretty clear that total assessed value less new construction and improvements, uh, does permit inflationary growth, but is limited to a maximum of five percent, or Consumer Price Index, which is three point seven percent. So the levy that was proposed, one point two seven nine four, uh, is much higher than what Missouri state law permits, which would be one point one three three four, using the current Consumer Price Index. So I don't know if there was any discussion last week about that, uh, or if indeed the presented value was accepted, but based on my calculations, the city's gonna be getting a lot more revenue than the five percent increase that's allowed. I think that needs to have another look, to make sure that Missouri law is followed, uh, and if it's not, then we may have to pursue that further. Any questions for me?
Thank you, sir. Alright, we have, uh, one more public speaker. We got Will Coats, Mr. Coats.
Good evening. My name is Will Coats. I'm chairman of the Alas CDC. Tonight, you will hear a presentation from TPMA on the recommendations for Lee Summit EDO of the future. Regardless of the direction that the mayor and the council takes, this EDO will outlive both the mayor's and my term. My request is that you be informed, thoughtful, and deliberate in your decision. I'd like to share a story with you that covers the last fourteen months. Sensing that there were underlying issues between the EDC and the city, I met with the mayor twice before my term began, once on July sixth and once on August ninth. I pointedly and repeatedly asked whether the mayor felt the EDC had leadership issues, uh, in particular with our executive director. He would not answer. I told him that he was either being coy or intentionally ambiguous. The EDC lost city funding on the day of the annual meeting, the same day I took over as chairman. For the last fourteen months, our investors have waited patiently for the clarity on our future. Our executive director retired under pressure last December. Today, we have an interim director and no staff. But we have investors, a treasury, and a five oh one C three status. Last January, the mayor indicated that he would love to start negotiating with us on a PSA. We wanted to oblige him, but he reversed course and deferred to the best practices study. This evening's recommendations entail a process that may take another twelve months. Not a single chamber or EDC director, member, or investor, or local businessperson was consulted in this study. On the matter of a new strategic plan, did you know that the EDC completed a strate, strategic plan largely paid for by the city in July of two thousand and twenty-two? The EDC board approved this plan last December. The mayor even said he loved the plan, that, but we weren't capable of implementing it. My point in sharing this is that where we are today was completely avoidable, and for what? Twenty-six months of economic development activities in the void, the loss of regional reputation and target of the business community's ridicule. The outcome is always felt preordained. In closing, do any of you know whether the chamber board wants to take on EDO responsibilities? Is its leadership qualified in matters of economic development? Finally, ask yourselves if it's appropriate to give control of the city, the chamber, and EDO to two brothers. We, you, have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that'll take us into presentations. Our first presentation is on Economic Development Organiz, Organization's Strategic Recommendations. Mr. Elam?
Mayor and members of the council, good evening. Ryan Elam, Assistant City Manager. Control of the computer, a little accident. Uh, so, uh, tonight, before you, uh, we've got Brett Wyler with Thomas P. Miller and Associates. Uh, he's back for his third presentation in front of the city council. Uh, if you remember back in, uh, May, uh, Brett was before you with the Best Practices for Economic Development Organizations. Uh, and then in July, uh, Brett and Cecilia, uh, led, I think, over ninety, uh, business members, community members, and various stakeholders through a workshop. And now today is, uh, kind of the final presentation of the, the recommendation and analysis as a result of really a combination of all of that continued work. And with that, um, I would like to turn it over to Brett.
Thank you, Ryan, Mayor. Good to see you again. Council, good to see you again. Um, feel like I'm in the center of the universe this week with the Travis Kelsey, Taylor Swift stories. Uh, my daughter was excited to hear that I was coming to Kansas City this weekend. As Ryan mentioned, I'm here to present our findings from the interactive workshop and some strategic recommendations for your council to consider as you think about the future of economic development in Lee Summit. Before I do that, I know you folks are familiar with myself and our firm, but perhaps for those that were not in attendance at previous meetings, I do wanna go over again. Um, my name is Brett Wyler. I'm the Senior Director of Economic Development and Strategic Planning with Thomas P. Miller and Associates, based out of Indianapolis, Indiana. TPMA has been around for thirty-five years. Um, we operate at the intersection of economic development, workforce development, and education. Um, we've worked across forty-eight states in the continental U.S. and employ, um, fifty individuals representing fourteen states from across the country. Myself, I've been in economic development for over fifteen years, uh, working for both nonprofit corporations and also in the public sector, focused on business retention and expansion work, business attraction work, capital investment strategies, entrepreneurial ecosystem building, and whatever else was asked of me, of my community. Um, I've led as a project lead and a strategic advisor on a number of economic development strategic plans across the country, ranging from small rural communities up to multi-state federal commissions and everywhere in between. Tonight, I'm gonna talk a little bit about where we've been, um, throughout this process, discuss the scope of work for this particular project, outline our findings from the interactive workshop that was held this summer, discuss some of our key strategic recommendations, and then also propose a few additional recommendations for you to consider. It's my understanding that the end of last year, the City of Lee Summit was looking to make some changes, and was aspiring to better understand and structure, and ultimately optimize their Economic Development Service Delivery System for the city. The city released an RFP for a professional consulting firm to conduct a best practices studies for economic development organizations. Our firm submitted a proposal and was ultimately awarded, and presented those findings to you folks in May of this year. At the conclusion of that, the council agreed that it was important to try to solicit additional feedback from the greater community, community leaders, business leaders, economic development partners, workforce development partners, et cetera. And we convened an interactive workshop in July with approximately, um, eighty individuals across the community of Lee Summit. At the conclusion of the workshop, our team analyzed and quantified the findings from that workshop, conducted some desktop research of existing economic development organizations in Lee Summit, and ultimately have developed a report that contains some strategic recommendations or considerations for your council to consider. I'm here tonight, obviously, to present, um, those findings and those recommendations to you. So if you'll recall, and I apologize this slide's a, a little bit busy, um, some of the key findings from Phase One of this prod, process, um, in the best practices report. First, we outlined some of the common functionalities of economic development organizations. You'll see those here on the screen, business attraction and marketing, business retention and expansion, providing entrepreneurial support, and when appropriate, um, assisting with workforce development and talent, uh, retention and attraction in a region. We took that one step further and developed a methodology to understand what we categorized as high-performing economic development organizations, and outlined a number of key characteristics that these organizations demonstrated. Uh, in our research, you'll see those again on the screen here, not gonna read all of them to you. Um, but we surmised that economic development organizations that were successful, that were able to accommodate and facilitate growth in their communities, demonstrated most, if not all, of these characteristics. To better understand those, uh, characteristics, we looked for economic development organizations, um, performing those and, and practicing those in similar communities. And we performed a case study analysis in five communities across the country, analyzing their organizational structure, their organizational strategy, and their organizational performance. You'll see here, it was a mix of structures. We looked at several public EDOs and several private and public-private partnership models. The last time I was here, I tried to leave you with some final thoughts to summarize my presentation. And the first and perhaps most important takeaway for us was that no two EDOs are alike. While they have common characteristics and they perform common functions, successful EDOs are able to customize in order to meet the demands and needs of their local economy. Second, we outlined that we believe economic development is truly a team sport, that no one organization should be responsible for facilitating economic growth in a community, although we do believe that there should be a lead economic development organizational, organization for an ecosystem to thrive and flourish. We recognize that leadership is key, and outlined a number of characteristics, both tangible and intangible characteristics, that we saw in leaders, uh, both in our desktop research and in our case study analysis. And we recognized that high-performing EDOs measured their performance. While often can be seen as a somewhat complicated endeavor, successful EDOs are able to track and measure progress to understand if they're meeting the goals of stated objectives, uh, of their community. And then lastly, successful EDOs are always looking towards the future. Um, they're looking at emerging markets, emerging trends, and positioning and structuring their organization in a way to meet the needs of future challenges, um, that their economy may face. As mentioned, in July, my team visited Lee Summit and facilitated an interactive workshop with approximately eighty individuals representing public and private sector leadership across Lee Summit. We, I believe it was a fast-paced, energetic, um, exciting night, and certainly appreciate the willingness of the council and the mayor to participate in that session alongside their constituents. But we add- But we asked participants four key questions about the current state of the economic development system and the desired future state of the economic development system. And if you'll recall, we asked individuals to outline their answers to questions, but perhaps most importantly, tables were asked to work together and build consensus amongst their peers to develop ideas and provide us with information on the current state and future state of the system. So, a couple of quick notes before I go into the findings here. Quantitative results can be found in the report as part of your packet. I've summarized the findings here in the coming slides. And second, we did have to use some discretion when analyzing the results. We did not provide participants with answers or options. This was not a multiple-choice test. So we had to interpret some of the answers that were provided to us and use our professional discretion to categorize answers to better understand the themes that were presented in the findings. So with that, the first question we asked participants was, what was the current economic development ecosystem doing well? And I want to emphasize "ecosystem." We were not asking about one particular organization or the city. We were asking about the ecosystem as a whole. By far, the most frequent answer was that participants agreed that the city's Development Services Department was a key asset in the economic development system in Lee's Summit. They also agreed that the education, workforce development, and training ecosystem was performing admirably. Participants also believed that there are ample opportunities to network and coordinate across industry sectors, public and private sectors, that there were ample opportunities to connect as a community. And lastly, while not specifically described or defined in details, participants believe that there are adequate business support services in place today. The second question we asked was, what does the economic development ecosystem need to improve? There was a much wider and more diverse range of answers to this question than other questions. Looking at it in terms of frequency, the most frequent answer was that there was a need for more business support services, more specifically, business retention and expansion services. Commonly understood business retention and expansion services include technical assistance, growth services, talent management, workforce development assistance, access to capital, access to land and buildings. Second, and this is where we had to use a little bit of our discretion, but there was a real strong desire for the economic development system to take a more coordinated and strategic approach. This was captured several ways in the findings. We heard we need a clear strategy with goals, objectives, and priorities. We need a clearly defined vision for the future. We need enhanced regional collaboration, and we need data-driven decision-making. Third, there was a perception amongst participants that the economic development system was not doing enough to market Lee's Summit to outside investors or to businesses looking to expand or relocate into a new market. And lastly, there was an indication from participants recognizing that investments must be made to continue to modernize infrastructure in the city. And when we talk about infrastructure, talking land, buildings, roads, utilities, et cetera. Next, we asked them what resources were needed to optimize the economic development system. Again, the answer with the most frequent answers, the recognition that there needed to be sustainable funding and resources to support a high-performing economic development ecosystem. This sentiment, again, expressed in several ways. Funding and resources for economic development, marketing, and public relations, capital for infrastructure modernization and site readiness, and sustainable funding to support economic development activities. Next, it was clear that participants believed there's currently a leadership void in the economic development system. They recognize the importance of having effective, talented, and experienced economic development leadership at the helm of the local ecosystem. And then participants agreed that there was a need for more transparency from the economic development system specifically related to system performance, incentives, and the corresponding community return on investment. And again, the full results are available in the report. We analyzed the frequency in which answers were submitted, and then we also calculated the average priority ranking that they were submitted. Almost skipped one. Lastly, we asked, what are the outcomes you're looking for? What are the outcomes you desire for a high-performing economic development system? It was very clear in the responses that participants recognized the direct correlation between economic development and the quality of life for residents and future residents of Lee's Summit. There was a desire to diversify the business base, take intentional steps to foster, to facilitate growth for industries that create high-quality and high-paying jobs. Then again, a desire to see clear objectives, a clear strategy, goals, and transformational leadership from the ecosystem. And then, lastly, participants are looking for, again, a word we've seen a couple times, transparency from elected officials and economic development leaders in the community. Before I offer up our strategic recommendations, I think it's very important to discuss some of the limitations to this report. First and foremost, that yes, both the first report, Best Practices for Economic Development Organizations, and the subsequent Interactive Workshop and Strategic Recommendations report that I'm presenting tonight, were in fact commissioned and led by the city. As I explained to you on my last visit, when we were conducting our Best Practices Report, we intentionally did not look at the current ecosystem in Lee's Summit. We wanted to approach that work as unbiased as we possibly could. The second phase, there has been more interaction with city leadership, specifically Mark Dunning and Ryan Elam. The scope of service that was agreed upon between my firm and the city, there was no opportunity for us to interact directly with the current Economic Development Council, the Chamber of Commerce, the Workforce Development Board, university representation. We do understand that those organizations were active participants at the interactive workshop. But again, I think it's important to note that we have done this work on behalf of the city. Second, as I've alluded to a little bit, very limited, direct interaction with the business community. Again, participated in the workshop, but we were unable to conduct a survey with the business community. We were also unable to meet with any business leaders on a one-on-one basis. I would say with that, our biggest question mark when considering what recommendations to put forth is the funding question. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But no matter what structure you decide, it will not be successful without the support of the private business community. And in many ways, that support is financial support. And then lastly, it was an aggressive timeline. We recognize and respect the urgency. Our timeline was pretty aggressive, three and a half, four months. As we embarked on this process, more questions came up. And we think with a longer timeline, we could have potentially answered some of those questions. With that said, we believe that we are putting forth some very real recommendations for you to consider as a council. First, structural recommendations that we are comfortable putting forth at this time are based on our findings from the Best Practice Report that we conducted and the results of the Interactive Workshop. And we believe at this time, based on the knowledge that we have, there are two viable options for the community. One is to facilitate a merger between the Lee's Summit Economic Development Council and the Lee's Summit Chamber of Commerce, or two, launch a new economic development organization. We also considered reinvesting in the current Economic Development Council. And we also considered integrating traditional economic development services into City Hall. Again, based on our research, based on our findings, based on the information that we have today, we did not believe that those were viable options. First, by merging existing entities, we believe Lee's Summit will be in a competitive position due to a new consolidated, single-branded economic development operation that will be able to tell one clear, compelling story to existing businesses and potential and future businesses and can serve as a one-stop shop for all economic development needs. If I may offer a quick anecdote, business owners are busy building their businesses. They don't have time to understand the sometimes connected, sometimes disconnected parts of an economic development ecosystem, creating a one-stop shop that they can go to to understand the resources and services available to them, reduces friction for them, increases the likelihood that they will take advantage of those resources, which we believe will facilitate their growth. Second, the other viable option that we are comfortable presenting tonight is to repurpose and reallocate the $300,000 formally committed on an annual basis to the Lee's Summit Economic Development Council to launch a new standalone entity. Based on conversations and questions that I've answered with city council, based on our research, based on findings from the Interactive Workshop, it's clear that the council wants more control, more influence, more accountability, and wants to design an economic development organization that they believe will help facilitate growth for Lee's Summit, creating a new economic development organization that affords this community that opportunity. Talked about urgency. Recognize the urgency, understand and respect the urgency. We can't make this decision for you. I very much wanted to stand in front of you tonight and give you a clear-eyed recommendation and say, this is the path. This is how you do it. At the end of the day, your community needs to figure this out. And what we're proposing is that council, whether former, formal, or informal, forms an exploratory committee to evaluate the financial feasibility, political feasibility, understand the capacity needed, the personnel and talent needed, and leadership required, and legality of each of the two options that we've presented. We believe this exploratory committee should include leaders from both the private and public sector. Outlined at a high level what we believe this process could look like. Not going to go into every line item on the screen here, but rather focus on a couple key components of this process. First is the process of forming the committee. Believe that the committee should be appointed by the mayor and city council. Committee members to be considered should include the mayor of Lee's Summit, City of Lee's Summit City Manager, board members from both the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Council, past board chairs from both the Chamber and Economic Development Council, representation from the school district, representation from the Workforce Development Board, and appropriate representation from the business community with emphasis on small business representation. Outline what we believe are desirable set of skill sets and qualifications necessary for committee members. Again, I don't want to read to you, but you'll see here, administrative law and other legal expertise, banking, real estate, accounting, and finance. Maybe most importantly, economic development. We propose that the committee consider a number of subcommittees as key components to this process, a finance and operations committee, a fundraising committee, real estate committee, executive leadership search committee, communications and governance. When the exploratory committee begins its work in earnest, the key component of this process will be a feasibility study. Again, I don't want to read to you here, but a couple key components of this process that we think are worth emphasis. Key stakeholder identification, talking to the business community and community leaders. Evaluation of organizational options. Our hopes that you would rely on the Best Practices Report, the Interactive Workshop, and the business community. And then perhaps most importantly, a communication strategy to ensure transparency to business leaders, community leaders, and the community at large throughout the process. Arguably, the most important component of this process, in our professional opinion, is the fundraising feasibility study. Again, without support from the private sector, future ideation of economic development in Lee's Summit will not work. I believe there needs to be an intentional engagement process to understand the likelihood of investment from your business leaders, from your private sector. This fundraising feasibility analysis, we believe, will help you uncover fundraising strategies, identify success factors, identify potential volunteers, and inform potential campaign messaging. Leave the final recommendation. It'd ultimately be a presentation to this body with a recommendation of the optimal organizational structure, governance structure, financial projections, forecasts, and viability, timeline and milestones, key performance indicators, and a sustainability and social responsibility plan. Whatever organizational structure the community moves forward with, obviously, we believe a revised public service agreement will be in place. And we've outlined some of those key components of the PSA that we think are critical. And we've outlined some of those key components of the PSA that we think are critical to a cooperative relationship between the city and whatever entity leads economic development into the future. Lastly, we've provided you with several other additional considerations. First, organizing an economic and workforce development task force. There's a perception amongst participants at the interactive workshop that the system is not currently coordinated or collaborating or communicating effectively. We believe it would be in the best interest of the community to form an informal coalition. Embrace the idea of an ecosystem as an opportunity to share information, look for efficiencies. And this coalition should include EDC, Chamber, City, SBDC, tourism, state economic development representatives, legislators, university representatives, et cetera. There is a perception amongst participants, based on our findings, that there is not an economic development strategic plan in place currently. We heard repeatedly throughout the workshop and seeing the results, that there was a real desire for a clear vision, goals, objectives, and corresponding strategies and tactics. With a strategic plan in place, your community will be able to better measure and evaluate the performance of the economic development system in Lee's Summit, perhaps garner some of the accountability that currently feels missing based on the findings of the interactive workshop. I will note that the strategic plan should be a timing consideration. If you decide to move forward with an exploratory committee and conduct a financial feasibility study, that perhaps the strategic plan should precede the fundraising analysis. Third, we support the adoption of an ecosystem wide CRM system or customer relations management system. Again, a perception amongst participant, a lack of coordination, collaboration amongst partners, a lack of data driven decision making. We believe that a CRM system embraced by partners across the system will improve some of those perceptions. And then lastly, while not traditionally seen under the purview of traditional economic development, findings from the interactive workshop certainly indicate the need for a better understanding of the housing market in Lee's Summit. With particular recognition that there could be a potential need for affordable housing options for residents, employees of your employers across the community. So we encourage the city to elaborate with the appropriate partner on considering a local housing study. So concludes my presentation. Wanted to just conclude with just a couple remarks that we shared as part of the best practice survey or best practice report in phase one. Minding what we believe is the aspirational vision of what an economic development could or should do. Hear from the International Economic Development Council. Also, some sentiments expressed from the leaders of economic development organizations that we interviewed as part of our case study analysis. One in particular that I quite like is from Jason Cannon saying it takes a long term painstaking investment in order for a local entrepreneurial ecosystem to be successful. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Yes, we have questions for you. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Why, is there a reason that you didn't or you were unable to talk to business owners?
Our scope of service agreed upon with the city did not include direct outreach. We proposed a survey. And I certainly don't want to speak on the city's behalf, but I think it could be some budget considerations as part of the decision to not move forth with TPMA conducting a survey with the business community.
Okay. And then as far as, and I don't know, I don't know that you'd be able to answer this right now, but as far as like timelines of things, if we followed your recommendation and basically started from scratch, do you know like a timeline of that? And then do you know a timeline of we combined another, under the chamber? And then also, well, yeah, do you know a timeline of either of those typically?
I don't feel comfortable answering this with certainty. We have outlined the exploratory committee and the corresponding process as we believe a 12 month process to do, to execute appropriately. So that's the answer I'm comfortable giving you on that front.
Okay. And then if we like, if we decided to not do one of the recommendations and go with the current EDC, and what's the timeline on that? And what does that? And I don't know if you'd be the appropriate person to answer this, but what does that typically look like? Or is the, would the board be completely restructured? Would it be everything restructured? Or what would?
Can you start over with the question? I'm sorry.
So if we decided to not follow one of the recommendations and go with the current EDC, what would that look like? Would the, would that board be restructured? Would, would? If we decided to go with that, since the 501(c)(3) is already in place, would that, would they have to follow these current recommendations? Or what would that look like necessarily? Given these recommendations? And since that 501(c)(3) is already in place, what, what would that process look like?
So this sounds like a little bit of a legal question, but as I understand it, they are a independent board that can choose to move forward as they see appropriate, whether start a new 501(c)(3) or not.
So they wouldn't, okay, so they wouldn't. If we decided to go on, go with one that already has all that in place, they wouldn't necessarily have to follow these recommendations unless that would be up to us? Or would that?
I can, I can only answer, I'll try to answer in basically based on experience in the meetings. The EDC had at one point pledged to follow whatever direction the city went. Or as if you're talking about what would be the their process, if we went a different direction, started a new EDO or whatever. They had said that they would contribute their dollars towards the direction that we would choose. I'm not sure where they stand after hearing the public comments, but.
And the only reason I'm wondering is because it does concern me that we have gone so long without an EDC to this point. And so I'm just trying to weigh the options time wise. What's going to be the best use of time, but also what's going to be the best use of funds? So I'm just trying to weigh all the options.
Yeah, I think maybe we are not interested in compelling and independent board of directors of a private 501(c)(3) to do anything against what they believe are their own best interests. Frankly, our goal is to foster a productive conversation amongst the leaders of this community to get economic development off the sidelines and back in the game and in a way that is structured for, you know, success. And again, based on the information that we've been able to kind of reach or garner, this is what we're comfortable recommending. Hopefully a conversation starter for your community.
Okay, so I just have one other question that's kind of redundant, but out of the two options that you recommended, which one's going to be the fastest time wise? Combining it with the chamber maybe?
So I'm going to dodge a little. When I was here in May, I believe you asked me out of the five organizations that we analyzed, what was our preferred or optimal structure? And at that time, we suggested that we believed one redman was structured in a way best positioned to meet the needs of economic development today and in the future. And they have taken a consolidated approach so that they can tell that one compelling story and serve as the one stop shop for the needs of their customers. And if you recall, the customers are the entrepreneurs, the business owners, and those potential investors and businesses perhaps looking at Lee's Summit as a destination.
Okay, that's helpful. And I do, now that you mentioned that, I do remember that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor. So Councilmember Pryor already touched on some of the questions that I had about timelines and engagement with local businesses. I feel like I'm probably a broken record on this, but I feel like we've spent a lot of time and a lot of money and a lot of resources to tell us things that we already knew about what we're looking for. I think it's nice to see options, but you know, I heard some things in that presentation, like we should do a housing study. We've talked about attainable housing at length. We've talked about apartment studies and senior housing, like you need attainable housing, like yes. Obviously. I guess we can do another study to tell ourselves that, but we know that. Do another strategic plan, but as has been pointed out, the EDC did a very nice strategic plan. We have a playbook, I think. We had a PSA in place, kind of outlining what we were looking for from this organization. And again, what kind of got us here was that we felt like it wasn't, I think, being executed on the transparent way that we wanted. So I mean, if we need to go forward in this direction of having a study committee and taking another year, I understand that we need to figure out what exactly the new entity would look like, or repurposed entity, or whatever it ends up being, but I just, I just wanted to say I I feel like we keep talking about things that we've already looked at as a body many times, spent a lot of time thinking about already. And I just don't want to keep repeating the same work and reinventing the wheel over and over again. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, by way of disclosure, my law firm does represent the so I have consulted with our council. Sorry, I didn't, but they felt it was okay. I could talk about the matter, so long as I'm not venturing into too much that's benefiting the chamber, I guess. I'm not sure how to characterize that. But I'm, I just ask a couple of questions more to dialogue with our consultant here. This identified the two options for moving forward as your recommendations as being the viable, the only two viable options. And why would the other, just a simple question is why would the other two options not be viable? Meaning workable, capable of, I mean, it's, what was your assessment of that? Why those were off of the table?
Yeah. So let me start with integrating economic development services to, into City Hall. We think that's a limiting approach bound by very specific jurisdictions. Believe that the city's inability to draw on innovative, creative funding sources to build capacity, to appropriately staff and resource the operation is limiting. Specifically, talking about business attraction, business attraction is a very expensive endeavor. Not always appropriate for public dollars. I would also say some of the public disclosure laws and right to know laws can complicate site selection, conversations, and decisions. Would also offer that, that sounds like the Development Services Department has identified its core competencies and really is doing that well. So fear of perhaps diluting some of those efforts were a consideration. Also say that we relied on some of our own professional experience and opinions on working as consultants, both in public entities and private entities, recognizing the limitations and advantages of each. The Economic Development Council believe that the community has lost confidence in that body or in that organization. And we believe that the findings from the interactive workshop really affirmed that. Fact that 80 of your most influential community leaders are unaware of the economic development strategic plan in place that your lead economic development organization is troubling to us. Fact that you as a body have decided to pull funding from that organization is telling. And our understanding of staff departures and continuous saw us lack of resources based on our understanding gave us pause. I would love to see you all work it out with the EDC. I don't want to editorialize too much up here, but this feels like a a political challenge that you're facing. Less so a structural challenge. That's why when I told you I really wanted to get up here and give you a clear eyed definitive answer. Recognize that a little more complicated than that based on realities.
Thank you for finding. Sometimes we do our public hearings in a certain way, we ask questions, then we later comment, but I think our, with presentations.
It's just a presentation. Yeah, you can make comments.
Come and go with both. So I make a comment, the Chamber of Commerce are, is second to none. I talked to a client of mine who's coming up from from Dallas, Texas to start businesses here. And I said, this is one of the best ones in the state. Make sure you get to know them. They'll probably send a name your way. And it, what it does, it does very well. So I do have. So then the question in my mind is, would an expansion of its duties really improve or dilute its ability to do what it already does really well? I think that's, that's just, that's a question that I, that I, I don't have an answer to at this point personally. But it's one that concerns me because I want to make sure that our chamber continues to fulfill its mission in the way that it does so well for the not exclusively characterize it this way, but it serves the small business community in a and it's, and that's English how an EDC functions, a chamber function. Later to larger clients, investors. Not that the chamber won't welcome membership and, or vice versa. Not that there's not a cross pollination there, but I certainly think sometimes that laser focus for organizations can be helpful. And thinking like General Electric, the corporation we know of has been divesting itself of different lines of business because can't do all of them. So again, I want to keep our chamber being the great organization it is. So it does concern me a little bit, its idea of expanding its knowing. A 12 month process would probably lay out a whole bunch of things that would change the whole dynamics of how this all operates. And I go back to kind of the conversations we've been having, which how can we move this forward? How can we move this forward in a way that is not another 12 months, frankly? I think our business community, our city staff as council, our community, I think deserves that kind of forward motion in a not a 12 month. Again, I understand why your presentation frames it that way. Absolutely. I'm just, I don't know that I have an appetite for supporting another extended process. And and then, yes, political question. There's a lot of great people in this community. A lot of great people who have vested time, whether it people in this community, a lot of great people who have vested time, whether it be on this council, on the chamber board, EDC board, who sit there now, who perhaps may approach things in different ways. And I would comment, if I'm to editorialize, perhaps, in that a function of our past failures was perhaps personnel. So how do we move forward in a way that allows us to interact, have the kind of communication, collaboration that we need to succeed, perhaps in our existing ecosystem, but with re-energized discussions, refocused efforts, using some of the same materials you've presented right here, could go right into talking about how to reinvigorate both, all the organizations. We've been talking about that the whole time, collaboration is being key. So I do think, and shame on me, I don't know that I've read through the EDC strategic plan. Shame on me for not doing that. But it exists, we should, we should, as a, like, speak for myself, I should know it. That's all I can speak for. I should know what's in that, so I could speak to whether it functions as something that could benefit and wreck us. So, but I think it could enter into this conversation and help us perhaps moving forward with what we have in place. So, Mayor, my comments, and thank you, thank you, sir, for your presentation. I think my, I think there's a lot of work that could be done, and I think this material could be very helpful at bringing existing parties together to forward. I don't know that I favor, do not favor a long, drawn-out process. And I would favor looking back at that same EDC board and saying, can we, what can we do? What, I'm this far, obviously a lot that's involved, re-initiating a negotiation on that, but I'd like to think that the bodies could come together, joint meeting. Never, we never did that, never done that. And I don't know that that's appropriate. But we've done it with other organizations, perhaps that's a way to have the kind of collaboration I'd like to aspire to. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Level.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much for your presentation and being in kind of an enviable position with some of the questions, but I do appreciate your candor and being willing to answer those. You know, one of the questions I had before Mr. Felker asked it was just kind of, you know, how you arrived at the two options and, you know, I think you answered those very well, you know, why working a certain way may or may not work, and politics have, you know, always kind of get in the way of things. You know, as someone that spent a lot of time being involved in the LSEDC circa, gosh, 15, 16, 17, it was a really vibrant, strong, strong group. Monthly luncheons, the monthly happy hours, the involvement, and not just the city, I think people understand that too, is we have stakeholders from all over, you know, construction groups, whoever that might be, that's wanting to invest in the city. But I do think even during that time, we were left wanting and felt like where it was going and maybe what was going on inside that was not what we needed. And maybe it needed a shot in the arm, and maybe there were some personnel challenges and some leadership challenges. And I think, you know, the decision that we made, I don't know how long ago it was, to, you know, pull the funding, was to say, hey, we're not happy, and maybe this gets us to the table. And, you know, there were a lot of things that happened from that point on that, you know, I bet a lot of people wish they could take back. But I keep looking at the people that have, you know, a lot of the people that have donated their time to the EDC and what it was, whether we create a new one, it's still called the Lee Summit Economic Development Council, or, you know, unless you come up with some new name, or whatever that might be. And then, just looking through, but I always felt that they were very different. I always felt the EDC was very different with what they were tasked to do, and what, you know, kind of what the mission statement was there, and what the chamber provided. And like Mr. Felker said, I believe, you know, there's no doubt our chamber. And by the way, the chamber has come a long way, and we had some road bumps until we got the right leadership in place. And that leadership has taken the chamber above and beyond. And so we know what can happen when you have the right leaders in place and in good collaboration with this true mission of what we're doing. And so I think I'm probably in line with Councilmember Felker is that, you know, I do believe they're separate. As I look through, like, the committee formation and the recommendations that you put here, I see Mayor of Lee Summit, I don't know what the council's involvement would be, or if that's just the mayor, or if there would be council involvement in that, or how we would do that up here, because that might get tricky too.
Yeah. When writing this, that felt somewhat procedural and waters that we weren't necessarily comfortable swimming in. So we tried to approach it to kind of generally suggest, you know, like, how and who, and avoid some of the perhaps legal process that would be involved in forming any type of formal commission.
And I think having kind of a key figurehead from this body would, you know, that would fit with Mayor, and I do believe they sit on the executive board or have a position currently in that state. I also think, like, we made some decisions too, so whether we think they've been on the sidelines or not, a lot of that has been predicated on us saying, hey, we're going to go through this process, we need you guys to hold tight. And so I don't know that we can punish them for inactivity or inaction over the last six, 12 months, when, when they've committed funds to us, wanting to come together with us and knowing that, you know, we held back some money and they're willing to do that. So I, you know, I don't want to punish a group while they sat idly waiting for us to kind of figure out what direction we wanted to go. But I, but just, you know, running through this, it's like Mayor of Lee Summit, City Lee Summit Manager, board members from the Chamber of Commerce, board members from the Lee Summit Economic Development Council, past chairs from Lee Summit Chamber and Economic Development Council. So it's like, we are still in this recommendation to create this new one, we're still leaning on that group. So it's like, do we need to reinvent the wheel to create another one if we're going to go through this process and we think this will get us the desired outcomes that we want, understanding that we still have that money to put in there if we get those things? It is, you know, to me, I don't, I don't know why we couldn't take this approach, considering we have the 501 CO3, we have the funds that are existing in there, that we couldn't arrive at a new EDC through the current EDC, especially if we're going to engage those stakeholders of past and present. So not a ton of questions for you, a little bit here and there, but also just sharing some comments. So, you know, my preference would be that we take this, this great work and this great, you know, strategy that doesn't take near as long as maybe a 12-month process, or whatever that might be, and come up with a really good structure with the existing EDC that we have, and make sure we're, we're putting this together in a way that gives us the protection if we're not, if they're not meeting those things, and sets a clear directive as to where to go, and gets the right leadership in place. Because that's going to be ultimately the challenge, right? How do we all agree on the right leader? You know, who's picking the right leader? How do we, you know, that becomes a challenge too. So I don't think there's really an easy answer here. But I do think that, you know, my personal preference would be that we take these recommendations, we work with the existing board, and we figure out a way to get that thing going again. That's it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Edson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to wake up Mr. Dunning. Mr. Dunning, I just want some clarification on our public service agreements. Anytime we've had a public service agreement, it is between the council and the board of the organization, is that correct?
That's correct.
So those agreements are not between the mayor and the executive directors, is that correct?
That's correct.
So whatever we do, whether it's form a new organization or go with the chamber, then that board has to hold their employee responsible to whatever's in that PSA. Okay.
That's, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to refresh my memory a little bit. I appreciate your work on this. Regarding the chamber, I've never heard anybody from the chamber say they want to do this. And maybe I'm not in on those conversations, but I've never had a conversation with anybody from the board or the executive director saying they want to do economic development. And maybe those are just conversations I haven't, I haven't had. And a few years ago, when we were doing, and I don't mean to be respectful, I know I have, we have members from the chamber here, but a couple of years ago, when we were going through the PSAs, no one from the chamber board even came to the city hall. And so I have some concerns about that, just given past things that have happened. Also, I have concerns with PSAs because so far, they haven't worked out so well for us. That was one of the reasons we had started out talking about this council, talking about having more control over whatever we create. I'm not saying I'm against joining the chamber, joining these together, but we need to figure out how we are going to have some influence and control. And I feel like we're going to lose control over who's hired. And I feel like the chamber is a membership organization, I know the EDC is too. I just, I'd want to talk about it some more before we do it. I just have some real concerns. But I do, I've been part of chambers that did that, I know it works really well. But like I said, so far, I haven't heard anybody from the chamber saying we want to take this.
Yeah, if I may address that real quick, that recommendation is not based on someone telling us that the chamber, that was.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't implying.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it was strictly kind of a structural consideration based on the research that we had done and understanding, again, kind of going back to that one-stop-shop, that one compelling story, that recommendation was solely based on the best practices and some of the feedback.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure that we're not sitting up here going, hey, let's, let's get the chamber in on this, and the chamber board sitting in the back of the room going, we don't want to do that. We don't want to take that on. Like I said, I haven't been part of those conversations. So that's all we've got, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember DeMoro.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Just a little history. You know, the city council has been fully involved in this since, you know, August, well, June, July, August 22. I mean, we, we, we recognized, and we had several meetings about this, the lack of transparency and the inaction of the, of the, of the LSEDC. And then, when we decided, you know, to move forward with a breach, and the breach could not be cured, the city council has moved this whole, I mean, we have all, this council has, has moved the process to date forward. We've, we've driven the discussions, we've, you know, we've, we've actually, you know, brought in the consultant. And I just, I just feel like the city council, and as Councilmember Edson said, you know, it's, it's, it's basically, it's down to us and the, and the, whatever PSA is involved, whatever PSA is formed, you know, we are fully capable of making a future decision concerning the EDO. And, and so I said that to say this, it's just that, you know, we have, we have a great resource in Lee Summit Chamber, we have great resource in staff, and I, and I feel like, you know, whatever decision we make, as we discuss it, you know, we can either start over, we can combine, we can do an independent. But the main point I want to make is, I don't want to drag this all, you know, into an exploratory committee. I don't want to, I want to, I don't want to take that time. I think we would probably end up with the, some of the same answers that we did on the thing we had in July, I forgot what we called that. But, yeah, I do want to move this all along, and I think that the city council is fully capable of vetting, discussing, and coming up with a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Given all the comments that have been made, I'll try not to be redundant. But just to repeat a couple key points that some of my colleagues have made, Councilmember Level brought up what, how great a momentum and what a great environment the EDC was in 2017, 2018. I also was pretty engaged in my former corporate role with the EDC, I've been a member of the chamber also in the past. You know, we have so much positive momentum in this community right now, irregardless of this hiccup right now that we're trying to sort through regarding our ED ecosystem, ecosystem. We're growing. I think we're building, we've got more spec industrial buildings under construction right now than we ever have in the history of this city, period. So I'd like to say that some of the findings in this, this report and the assessment are pretty accurate. So now, with that being said, I feel the same as, as all of the comments that have been made. I don't want this cloud over this community, you know, going much longer than it needs to. 12 months, 18 months is enough. I don't want to wait another 12 months to get this done. It's not as easy as it sounds, but I think we all agree, we need the path of least resistance here to get something done. I'm indifferent if we combine them, the two options, if we combine with the chamber, or go back and talk to the existing group. But there's some things that I, some notes that I wrote down from your slides that are, have to be critical, critically thought through, whether it's us here, my colleagues and I, and the mayor, along with some kind of collaborative effort with the business community. There's some really key things that need to be addressed, because that's why we're here. And they were not happening, the accountability was an issue. And, and I hate to make this a personal, personality kind of issue, because we're bigger than that. Whether whoever's up here at the dais, or whoever's running that organization, whoever's on that board, you all have had great leaders on the EDC and the chamber board, and that, that can't be ignored. You all have done a great job, but, but pointing fingers or naming people, that's not the direction I want to go. And I don't think any of us up here want to go that direction either. But the key things that we have to do to keep moving forward are measured results, clear vision direction, partnership, measure of performance, coordinated plans, sustainability, this strategic plan. I know, I know that the EDC has put one together, I think some of us on the council, previous councils, were involved in that process. Let's, let's not reinvent the wheel, but we have to be together on a vision and accountability. And I agree with the private investors, I've been a private investor with the EDC in the past, and, but we're in this jointly together. And it's not one against the other, and it's got to be done sooner rather than later. I agree with my colleagues on that point. But we got to get beyond this little hiccup. And, and, yeah, people are watching outside of this community, and they're seeing all the positive stuff that's going on. The next presentation has to do with a pretty historic project that's coming down the line. And if we get caught up in this little stuff, bickering over things that shouldn't be that big of a deal, then it's going to affect some of the other projects that are on the horizon. So, Mayor, I just, I guess I'm blabbering a little bit, but I do want to make it as short a process as possible, and the path of least resistance. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll come back to you in a minute here. So with regard to, like, trying to get us going in a certain direction, I think you, Mr. Wyler, you've heard, we don't want this to take a long time. I guess I'm probably alone on this with regard to, I don't care how long it takes, I want to do it right. I don't want to be in this situation again. I don't want a future mayor to be, or council to be in this situation again, or the community to be in this situation again. So I would really like to do this right. And I'm willing to spend as much time as, as we need to. However, I will say this, I do have great confidence in the council, in the city staff, and the community, the business stakeholders that you have talked to, with regard to getting this done in a much shorter timeline. I think that, I think that the one thing, the one thing I'll say, can you go back to slide five on your presentation?
Numbers from where I'm at, so let me start from.
Right there, back, back. Yeah, no, next one, please. One more. I don't know, maybe your slides are better than mine. The one where it talks about common success factors. Oh, okay, there it is. No. Oh, okay, there it is. No. Changed. Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. So, um, at the bottom there, it says common success factors, relationship driven. That's pretty important, uh, for us. Effective leadership, very important for us. When you look at over on the right, you final thoughts, no two EDOs alike, so there's not one way to do this. ED is a team sport. We are not acting like a team as a community and with, between our organizations. Leadership is key. Measurement, measure performance, which you've heard council members say, we really want to, um, bring that into play and future ready. So I'll just go back to leadership. The only thing I'm going to talk about with regard to leadership is that, um, in the past, I've been pretty direct and clear. The people don't accuse me of being ambiguous or, um, very direct. So I'll be, for the, for the record, I'll be very direct. Yes, we had a leadership problem. And yes, I said it was, uh, the organizational leadership with regard to, uh, administration. And that it was also, uh, an, a board leadership problem. And here we are 14 months later and we still haven't resolved this. And the, there is no executive director to blame, so we, you know, we've got a board that we still can't work with. And so when I look at these paths, um, I'm inclined to encourage the council to consider the exploratory committee to simply remove the politics and have them help us make a decision. And, you know, and, and, you know, I understand we want more control. But I've never wanted to take it in-house. I think you, you've stated thankfully, in my opinion, thankfully, you didn't suggest that. Uh, but you certainly, I, I don't think it's control. I think it's, we want a relationship, we want, uh, transparency, collaboration. Uh, we want the leadership issues, issues, not just one, not just the administration. Issues as in the board addressed, and we haven't been able to get that addressed. Um, and that's why we haven't been able to move forward. So yes, it's going to be this, many of the same past leaders that are going to probably have to help and, uh, help us and to move this forward. I don't worry about that. I'm, I'm confident in our past leaders and our, uh, and civic leaders around the community that can give us guidance. So then it just comes down to maybe having them also help us with regard to the, the path. Um, but then they're going to have to do the heavy lifting of getting us back going again. So, um, I'm for the exploratory committee. I think the council should consider that. We don't have to make a decision tonight. I know they want this to move along quickly. But if we do an exploratory committee, if they give me the names and we put together, um, how many people? 13? 14? 12? I don't know the number. I know that what we, what we decide on, on the other, on all of our commissions and so, is it 13? That's the reason I threw it out there. Um, it's got to be a manageable number. It's got to be people that are willing to put in some time. Um, it's got to be civic leaders that care about, um, the city, the council, the, uh, the organization. And, um, that's the direction I would, would encourage the council to consider is we don't have to go through, and my apologies, Mr. Wyler, but we don't have to go through all this feasibility study and such. If we can just get a, a exploratory committee or an advisory board, whatever you want to call it, together to help us maybe bring a little bit of the politics out of this. Because then they can talk to, uh, the current EDC board, they can talk to the chamber board, they can talk to the council. Like we're supposed to be doing. So do you have thoughts on that before I ask the council to make comments on this?
Uh, the, I mean, the only comment I think I would offer is that, was how we arrived at our recommendation was perhaps to, eliminate some of the politics and, um, structure as close as you get in a political body to analyze the, the research that we've done, the findings from the workshop to chart a path forward.
Well, I've always said that we're going to do EDO, ED, we're going to do economic development in a great way. That we have the talent, we have the passion, we have the civic leaders, we have the best administration, we have a phenomenal council. Uh, there's no reason for this not to happen. Uh, I sure, I certainly heard from the, 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 straight from the mouths of my council members that they have a will to move forward, like passionately with economic development. And you know, I think we put it in the hands of an exploratory committee to help us take the next step. You know, you haven't talked to a lot of businesses one-to-one, but they can, and they know the businesses one-to-one. We just put this in the hands of our civic leaders and we move forward in a much more expeditious way than what you've outlined as, as in the 12 months. I'm going to ask council to comment on that. Tell me what they're worried about if you're not for bringing in more help to, um, to move this forward. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in response to that, and this is actually what I, what I was wanting to comment on. Definitely there is a future meeting. We, we believe in meetings. That can be productive with a focus and, and a, an outcome we're trying to, to, uh, drive toward. I like the idea of it being exploratory. I, I'll tell you that my initial notes that I was writing this down is, again, my thought that I shared in my earlier comment was council sits down with the EDC board and we just talk about, talk, talk it through, all of us together. That's, I think, an option. Certainly, even the, the exploratory committee as outlined in our recommendation is akin to that. I think what it lacks is, um, and Mayor and Mr. Dunning, not to say you wouldn't represent us, but it doesn't represent the full, like the council as a whole. We, we would, the, the way it's outlined doesn't include more than the two of you. And I personally feel like it would be very valuable for other members of council, if not the entire council, to be a part of that conversation. I realize that the larger the group, the more unwieldy it is. But I also believe we have great people in our community. We're all, uh, we all want to reach a resolution. We want to have this point in time be an inflection and something much better. But yes, there are difficulties behind us or even right in front of us, but I think we all really want what's after all this. Right. Um, that will take some time and I, I, Mayor, I do appreciate the thought that, yeah, doing something right is, um, worth the time it takes to do it. I don't think it's going to take as long as we discussed earlier, but yes, I'm in favor of a group. I don't know that I'm in favor of the exact iteration of this. I do like the idea of more, if not all of council being involved.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you go to the slide about the recommendations on the, on the exploratory committee? And I just wanted to say, I, I know that it said council and mayor would appoint, but I just think it's imperative that, um, as Councilmember Felker stated, that, that if we do go that route, that council is also included in this. Just, um, I, I feel like obviously we've had our issues with, with, um, council being left out of a lot of things as far as the EDC was concerned. Um, so I just think it's important that council is a part of this if we go forward with the exploratory committee. And then, um, and I'm not, I guess necessarily against the exploratory committee, but I do want to see the process sped up. I feel like a lot of what we've discussed, as Councilmember Shield said, is just redundant and I'd like to see it. I'd like to see it sped up and I'd like to see us get something done other than just talking about the same things over and over. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I think even though my comments initially were not particularly, um, careful, uh, I'm not opposed to the, because I think we, we do have to have some path forward, that, that it's not something we can just decide on the dais tonight. We need some more structured conversation about what the actual will be, how it will be. But I, I agree, I'd like to see that timeline go more quickly. Um, but I do think that we need someone to actually look at the legality, what, what form of 501(c) whatever. But, um, who, what would the board look like, that kind of thing? I think it is important that we involve a lot of the folks on this list because, um, their perspectives are important. And also none of this will function if we don't have buy-in from. And we could sit up here tonight and say, here's what it will be, go forth and do. But if people aren't part of that conversation, I just, they'll be happy to try to. And at the end of the day, you know, these PSAs, a PSA isn't an organization, it's an agreement, it's a contract. We don't, we don't form and control the organizations. We have a contract that says we want these services provided. Who is the most capable of doing? I think the kind of group would be the one to say, here's the structure that we think would be able to. I don't, I would disagree with my colleagues in that I don't really think, um, a large chunk of council should be a part of this. I think, um, being a little bit less political is probably good. And also you're already looking at a very long list of stakeholders in this room. And I think the, if you go and double that number of people, this kind of a group, I don't think more people actually equals more productivity. Quickly, which I've heard from some people on this dais, don't want this to fall out. And I feel like if you get a room of 30 people, there's no way for them to.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Lopez.
Thanks, Mayor. Excuse me. Um, yeah, I'm in favor of the committee being formed. And maybe there's a happy medium somewhere, um, where I, I, I know the bigger the group, tougher it is many times to, to conduct business. However, um, I'm kind of in between, maybe a representative, you don't want to make this political, but a representative from each council district. Uh, one, one representative maybe could help. So each district is being represented. Just, just throwing that out there. But, um, I'd be in favor of the committee itself and the way it's being proposed, but a little bit more council, uh, involvement or participation. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Level.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I'm all for the committee and what a playbook we have right before us too. Like just detailed things that like, where we actually have meaningful goals and outcomes. Like you've really listed a lot of things and I think just sitting in a room. And I would just say, you know, I would be willing to raise my hand as someone that'd be willing to sit on that committee if, if, if there was one formed as council representative or, or whatever that may be. But I think the playbook is there and we just got to work through those things. And I think we can do it, uh, you know, in a much quicker fashion than, than maybe a long drawn out process. And again, just throwing my hand up that says, hey, I'm willing to commit some time if needed or you need representatives. And then I just had to say this, like your recommendation for a CRM, oh man, I'm so happy to see that. Long overdue.
Yeah, as a former practitioner, um, I've always kind of valued the primary data that you get. How that can inform a lot of decision-making.
You put a lot of data in there and, and it could be very meaningful and helpful and communications and development, things like that. But yeah, I would be for it, Mayor. Thanks for your help.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so, um, Mr. Wyler, um, you're, you're facilitating, even though I'm facilitating, um, I, my, my thought is the council, uh, starts giving their, their recommendations as to who they'd like to see on this committee. Um, I don't know about four, Mr. Bushack, four people, four council members on a, on a committee. I mean, I think it's going to be a heavy lift. So, um, but I'm fine as long as council members are fully committed. This is, like I said, I want we, we really need, uh, to move forward and I want to do it in the right way. So I'm sure, I'm certain we can come up with more than enough leaders. I just think we need the right chemistry, the right civic leaders that, um, that are genuine and, and trying to find the best direction for all involved, including council. Do you have any thoughts on that as far as council members or Mr. Dunning? The number?
Just, uh, we're always cautious about, mindful, I should say, about how many are on committees. Because we have, um, you know, different council committees. And so when you have generally, generally when we get to three or more, we're looking at composition of those committees to determine whether we need to post those meetings as public meetings for purposes of having a quorum of those committees. So that's the only concern, uh, that we would need to be mindful of is just posting for public meetings. Not that these are intended to be close, you know, closed meetings to the public. And we could form that through, you know, I think the term's been used as ad hoc committees, right? It's not a committee that's intended to exist for a long period of time, so we could structure it that way.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll think about this for like a lot of council members, but at the same time, um, maybe that's what we need. No two EDOs or exploratory committees are the same.
There you go.
So submit names, we can put them together, we can make a final decision on which, everybody let me know if you, uh, it's the type of committee that usually I have more than enough council members, which is no fun, uh, trying to, to. I'll blame Mayor Protem Lopez for whatever decisions we make, uh, regarding the council members that serve on the committee. But, um, I think that this, that's a start. And the exploratory needs to do, the committee needs to help us decide a direction. And I will have no problem being very clear with the exploratory committee about like leadership, collaboration, transparency and relationship driven. And I have no problem pushing the exploratory committee as fast as I, as, as I possibly can. But it is a heavy lift. Do you agree? I mean, you're talking about.
It's an important decision. Um, and so I, I certainly wouldn't encourage you to sacrifice informed decision-making for expediency. Um, I will also suggest that I think that there are components of this process that are perhaps more important or more informative than perhaps other components of the process. I will go back to the private sector. Understanding where they sit. Um, I think would be a priority of this exploratory committee. Fully understand.
Well, the, the exploratory committee, uh, needs to be, like you just did, a, a work session with 80 people.
Sure.
And there were some rock stars in there from every sector of the community. And they need to have conversations with those, those people. Because you were able to come out of that with recommendations. So I think an exploratory committee can also, um, delve deeper than what you were able to do. Um, but that's going to take a little bit of time is my point.
Yeah, um, I think it's important to understand where they are as, um, potential supporters and investors. Whatever iteration goes forward. That's the, that was the biggest question mark for us. Where do the private sector lead stand? They need, what do they want to see and are they willing to invest and support economic development and Lee Summit?
Okay. Councilmember Pryor.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, um, would this, I know Councilmember Felker mentioned meeting with the current EDC. Would this, since they're included in this, would this take place of meeting with the current EDC board? Is that what?
I've been meeting with the EDC board for five and a half years. And I have detailed in letter after letter to you and to them the issues we were having with non-compliance, relationships, and more. And then you saw tonight the attitude. So, if it's gonna, if we're going to meet with anyone, I'd like to meet with civic leaders that are willing to be open, truly open to whatever direction we want to go. Because that's what I've heard from you, is that we want, we want to have engagement, we want to have, be a part of this process, we want to be collaborating and more. And it's not, I don't know that it's, and I don't want to drag you into it, Mr. Dunning, but I don't know, I don't know that it's going to be healthy bringing that board in here to meet with all of you if it's going to be a he-said, she-said game, like I heard tonight. But I do have faith in a lot of the members of that board. There are many of those board members that I would have no problem being on an exploratory committee. I don't know if I've answered Councilmember Pryor's question or if you need to add to it. Am I, am I, am I accurate that it probably wouldn't be healthy?
I, so my observation would be similar, right? That's why I think having a smaller group with stakeholders can de-politicize the discussions for recommendations.
And I understand that. I know personally, I don't know that I've ever talked to anyone from the board. I mean, I know that they've had the opportunity to reach out to us and I don't know that they ever have. So, I do know that, I just, naturally, I'm a peacemaker. So, I just kind of want, you know, kind of like Councilmember Felker, I think we just kind of want to defuse any situations or any conflict that's there. But I understand the importance of just these specific entities meeting, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to have to, I'm on a request, I'll request an email via email, you got the council to send me suggestions. And we will prepare Mr. Dunning for another meeting where we talk about specifically the exploratory committee. Does that sound like direction? Mr. Ry, or Mr. Elman-Bushack, next step is to do the exploratory committee. It doesn't mean we're done with you, Mr. Wyler, right?
Tonight or in general? I said it's been a long night.
In general, in general, it doesn't mean we're done with you. Because you've done great work and we do appreciate it. You've heard us, though, we don't want this to take 12 months. We're eager to move forward. But I have a funny feeling we also may, like Councilmember Lovell said, you've given us a playbook, but we might have more questions and we might need more help.
Yeah, I welcome any opportunity to continue to assist. Not interested in submitting this presentation and then disappearing. Happy to talk about how we may, whatever capacity is appropriate.
All right. I'm just looking at my attorneys to make sure that they're all good with everything. Yes, sir.
So, I'll provide a few additional comments.
Thank you.
As you start to move forward, I can provide some advice on some of the various issues you've talked about, applicability of the sunshine law, ability to form the corporation if that's the direction you pursue, your ability to control formation and the operational structure and the management of that corporation. There's a lot of options that we.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wyler, anything else? All right, thank you for your work. We do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity.
The presentation was great, but the study with it was very good with all the detailed information, so.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think I need a break. Yeah, let's just take a short break. I always say short break, but let's come back in at 8:20.
Okay, welcome back everyone. I'm gonna bring this meeting back to order. We are on presentations, number two. Uh, this will be seven B. Update on the downtown Market Plaza and presentation of guaranteed maximum price, GMP one. Mister Elam, Ryan Elam, our assistant city manager is gonna lead the presentation.
Mayor, members of council, thank you again. Ryan Elam, assistant city manager. And um, here this evening to give an update on the downtown Market Plaza. Uh, as well as to discuss some details related to guaranteed maximum price one. Uh, which is immediately on the agenda following this, this presentation here. So I'm just gonna go relatively quickly. I've got a handful of slides here just to kinda cover a few topics. Um, but before I get started, I did wanna uh, again, take the opportunity to thank the team that's working on this project. Uh, there is a large team that's been working on this project for uh, quite some time now. Uh, one including yourselves as a city council, you've been a very vital team member for this project. Uh, and then in the audience from a consultant perspective, we've got representatives from Lane four, McCown Gordon, GLMV. Um, as well as a number of, of city staff that have worked a lot on this project. Uh, from multiple departments, from public works, development, central building services, uh, parks and rec and all others. IT, this is really is a fully cross-departmental, very collaborative project of town. All I just need to thank are the downtown CID as, as a partner in the project as well. Is that, is that better? I'll try to get closer to the microphone. Apparently I talk quietly, uh, and I try to work on that. I guess I'll, I'll start yelling. Um, so uh, a- as we move on, I wanted to just touch on some recent accomplishments with the project. Uh, these are um, in no particular order or anything, but they're just some, some recent um, big, big items that were able to be completed. Uh, first thing, the AT&T West Lot acquisition. Uh, that was very, very critical for the project to be able to move forward. Uh, we had to work, uh, well, there was years in the making in order to acquire that West Lot. When I say the West Lot, I really mean the parking lot that really completed the s- the street frontage along Green Street. Uh, and, and we acquired that lot officially at the beginning of August. Um, we've also completely refreshed the website. Uh, we have uh, the renderings uh, up, more project information up. And we're gonna continue to update that throughout, uh, so that is available now uh, on there. We've made the preliminary development plans submittal, uh, so that is going through the process and I'll touch on those dates in a minute. We've firmed up preliminary pricing, uh, and we've really gone into the definition of the sources and uses uh, on that. And I'm gonna talk about that uh, as a big portion of this presentation here. And I'm gonna wrap this presentation up with our GMP one, uh, which really is an early civil package. Uh, so the scope of that work is related to the uh, public utilities, the major storm sewer infrastructure that needs to go in. A little bit of grading, uh, sanitary realignment, uh, and other pr- and other utilities that need to be rerouted. Uh, in order for the project to, to move forward. So upcoming milestones, I mentioned the preliminary development plan submittal. Um, there are two public hearings coming up for that, uh, following the standard development process. Uh, so it'll be before the planning commission on October twenty-sixth. Uh, and then we're currently scheduled to be in front of the city council on November twenty-first, uh, for those public hearings. Uh, so that'll be the time where we'll go into detail about uh, about the design or where things are at overall. Uh, and we'll have updated pictures and, and everything that you're used to seeing associated with it. Uh, unfortunately, this presentation does not have any uh, any updated pictures or renderings associated with it. Cause we're talking numbers tonight. Um, guaranteed max price one, uh, we do have a notice to proceed on that, uh, scheduled for October tenth. That's next uh, city council meeting, uh, with the first reading of the ordinance on tonight. Uh, following the second reading and the approval of that, that will be noticed to proceed, uh, with that scope of work. Uh, looking further, um, we've got GMP two, uh, that is listed on this here. GMP two, that's our guaranteed max price two, uh, that will be the remainder of the scope of work for the project. Uh, and we're looking to that to go out to bid to uh, a number of different trade partners, uh, McCown Gordon leading that effort. Uh, November second currently, uh, and then that'll be open for a while. And then we currently have it slated to come back in front of the city council December twelfth. Um, to have the full discussion over the final guaranteed max price for the project. Uh, and for the construction, the remainder of the construction contract to move. So um, with that, uh, I'm gonna move into the, the project sources, uh, and, and uses. So with the project sources, when I say sources, these are the dollars that have been allocated to the project so far. Uh, they're really in two different funding buckets currently. Uh, we have what we're calling secured funding, and that is funding that has had final approvals, uh, associated with it. There's agreements in place, uh, there, it's not necessarily cash, uh, particularly with the downtown CID commitment. Uh, but there is a contract in place, uh, that provides that funding, so it is secured. Uh, currently through a number of different city council actions over the years. Uh, through the downtown CID commitment and through our capital improvement plan funding. We have nineteen point six million dollars, uh, for the project, completely secured and, and ready to go. Pause here for just a second, so the, so with this secured funding, um, that's been funding the project up to this point. Um, and there's still plenty of funds available to continue to fund the, the project with our current commitments. As well as to um, cover the costs associated with GMP one, uh, and the early civil package associated with that. So, uh, additional project sources that have been identified, um, listing them here as unsecured funds. Uh, now these, these funds are unsecured because they were what I call consider a soft commitment. Um, so there's been uh, discussions, we've identified the other sources, but there's other action that needs to occur for that to be finalized. Um, and you can see there's additional outside funding sources, additional general fund sources. Uh, those two combined together are another twenty-two point three million rounding a little bit there. Um, but those require additional action from either the city council, uh, an outside entity such as uh, additional funds from the downtown CID. Uh, or the Missouri Development Financing Board, uh, through their process that we've been, uh, working with. Those are all, uh, that we believe has a very high probability of being able to be funded. Um, and there's just steps that need to occur for that to become finalized. Uh, and the desire is to shift these unsecured funds into a secured funding category, uh, when we come back with GMP two. Uh, part of the thought process with that is at GMP two, we'll have the construction cost, uh, we'll have the contingency down. We'll know more, uh, we'll, we'll know exactly the dollar amount, uh, of the project moving forward. So we'll be able to have, have those two match up on that night. So project uses, uh, project uses are what is all, what are all these funds being used for? Uh, so as you can see, land acquisition has been, uh, has already gone through the process. Uh, we have the farmer's market cost on here, the site development, the Green Street Plaza, the offsite improvements. Now, these numbers listed on the screen are what we ca- what we consider total project cost. So that's more than just the hard construction cost. That includes all of the soft costs, uh, things such as the design. Uh, and as well as the FFNE fixtures, furnishing and equipment, uh, owner provided items. Uh, as well as a decent amount of contingency, uh, overall is built into each one of these numbers here. I will also say that, uh, you know, it, the, the number seventeen million nine hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and forty-three cents is very specific. Uh, but that's just a result of applying contingencies throughout a number of different line items associated with the project. Based off of how far along the design is and how the pricing is occurring. So that number will change. That's not meant to be a significant figure to where we're, we're down to forty-three cents at this point. That's just kind of a math, uh, mathing, what we're currently tracking. You'll notice the number, uh, there at the bottom that says value engineering target. Uh, that is the current target of, uh, items and scope adjustments, adjustments that still need to be made. To the project in order to match the sources and uses up. Um, uh, so going, still going through the design process, uh, there's still final decisions to be made. Uh, on different techniques and different pieces of the project. Uh, but currently we have a target set of, of a little over three and a half million dollars, uh, in order to make those sources and uses match. Uh, and that, those numbers have been put together by McCown Gordon, uh, in coordination with us, the city, as well as with Lane four. On uh, different, maybe different approaches that we can take to achieve the same outcome. Uh, and still have the same level of quality, uh, but maybe reduce some costs in some different areas as we go along. So that's a, that's a process that is gonna continue to occur. And when we get to a final number on that, uh, we'll be able to have a full accounting of those, those different decisions that had to be made. Uh, in order to get that number to be within what we consider the sources and uses to match, to match each other. This slide here, this just shows the overall sources and uses. Currently, the secured and unsecured funding matches those total estimated uses for the project. This is what we're using to, uh, continue to guide the design, uh, and guide the pricing effort as we go along with this construction manager risk process. So that was the project overall. That was the, the big picture, um, sources and uses associated with everything associated with this project. I'm gonna focus in and talk a little bit about just guaranteed max price one, our early civil package. Uh, so with this, uh, this was advertised in multiple locations, uh, and open, open to all interested parties. It was advertised from August fourteenth to August twenty-eighth. Um, advertising Casey Star Dos Mundos, Casey Hispanic News, uh, as well as utilizing the building connected bidding platform, uh, associated with that. And McCown Gordon's here and they can talk a little bit more about the various trade partners that they, uh, that they went out to for this scope of work associated with GMP. Uh, this was a great bid summary that they provided. Um, you can see that, uh, there was overall, there were seventeen different bids received, uh, of fifty-eight solicitations that were sent out. Where it was advertised, uh, and how they went, um, went about that. They did have the ability to accept both electronic and paper submissions, uh, and that was included in all of their advertisements as well. Uh, and again, the bids for this project, they came back competitive, uh, and they're, they're trending in what we'd call the right direction. Um, we had a number, uh, previously set aside for this scope of work and the, the number came in lower than our earlier estimate. Not by a lot, but we're tracking in the right direction. So, next steps of the project. Um, again, we have the first reading of GMP one tonight. Uh, with a successful reading on that, we'd move on to the second reading, uh, at the next city council meeting on October tenth. Uh, that would also be coincide with a notice to proceed with that scope of work. We have the public hearings for the preliminary development plan coming up in front of the planning commission and the city council. Again, the bid advertisement for the rest of the project, uh, and then a, a detailed city council review, uh, in December, December twelfth for that. So that probably looks a little familiar, started with it in. So, uh, the next two slides are gonna be different than what was in your packet. Uh, and the reason for that is, uh, I have this slide on here, that's the previous milestones, and these are construction milestones. And just like every good construction project, the details in the middle kinda change every once in a while as to what the dates are. Uh, so, um, after this is put together, things got adjusted on the schedule a little bit, but the end date has not changed. So, this page here says previous milestones, that's what was in your packet, you can ignore that piece. This is the current schedule. Uh, so mobilizing with McCown Gordon, uh, if everything goes as previously discussed would occur October twenty-fifth. Mobilizing for the building demolition and abatement, uh, so that's the, uh, the old Ice House structure, the, the structures that are currently on site. Be November sixth for that mobilization. Following with the utilities, the full building permit, the farmer's market building pad is expected to be complete around April thirtieth. Uh, where they would then start going vertical on the, on the farmer's market. And with a substantial completion date of May seventh of twenty twenty-five. Um, again, I'll caveat that I have these listed as current milestones, um, because as you can tell, the details, uh, on, on some of these keep changing. But the really important date at the end, uh, is that May seventh of twenty twenty-five for the substantial completion. And with that, that is really the end of the presentation and the update, uh, regarding the Market Plaza here. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions as well as the, uh, the rest of the team is here and available to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Alright, questions? Councilmember Pryor.
I just have a really quick question. I, I know, um, you, you had talked about maybe doing something. City wi- or like something special for the demolition of the Ice House. Have you given that any more thought? Is that something that?
So, um, that is something that we have, have talked about. Um, there's no details on that yet. Uh, I think once we have the contracts in place. Uh, then McCown Gordon and Lane four will be working together and working with us as a city to, to work on a, a groundbreaking. Uh, that's why there's no date on that yet, but we have talked about that. Uh, and then any sort of, uh, additional special event that could occur resulting with the Ice House. We wanna get the abatement done, uh, before we have everybody over there. We don't wanna have that kinda going on while the abatement's going on. So, that all has to be coordinated with that abatement contractor board, so those are, uh, potential details to come, uh, as things move forward.
Okay, thank you. I just know that we're probably in district one going to get that question, so I just wanted to see if there was any progress on, on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Demoral.
Thank you. Uh, Ryan, uh, staying with the abatement. Out of the solicitations, nine solicitations, two bids was, and I'm just curious, was the scope of, of, uh, service, uh, too, too broad for them? Or, I mean, do you have any feedback from the two, uh, bids? You know, were they not qualified? I just wondered why we just got two bids, because this is a pretty big, pretty big operation.
Uh, that would be for the abatement piece specifically, uh, and with that, I would like, uh, McCown Gordon to come up and help, help answer that question.
Good evening, Sean Cross with McCown Gordon, um, reconstruction manager for this project. Uh, the abatement of this was about a hundred and forty thousand dollar package. The abatement of this was about a hundred and forty thousand dollar package. And so is it was small enough and it's cut up enough to where your large, I mean, maybe larger part trade partner didn't want to, you know, pursue the project knowing there was going to be some competition on it. So we did get two proposals on the abatement. However, on the demolition, I believe we got, I think it was seven proposals. Proposals for the.
So so it it was, it was just a a small enough project that you didn't large, the large firms did solicit, but they they figured well.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
So Mr. Eelm, I think you mentioned earlier in the presentation that you're hoping to have some of those potential funds be be more firmly allocated. At what point are you looking for feedback from council on that, like the general fund balance that you might be needing to allocate?
So we were we were thinking that that would be the same time in December as we when we have firm pricing. So we know that that the right amount is is being allocated. There's some continued work on our end that that do in order to be able to provide a full picture to the the city council on different options as to how that allocation could occur. But at that December twelfth, a city council meeting kind of paired that up with the GMP two was the the current thought process. We'd be happy to talk about when you would like us to bring that forward. We can move that up at any.
I want to that conversation whenever you guys want to have it. I'm sure it'll be in line with the fund balance policy that we're adopting tonight, and I I hope that we can look at maybe some natives, right word, but you know, with some of the things like you have to work on, I think Johnson, that maybe some of that could come from CIP funding. So those were projects that might have had to be in the CIP eventually anyway. I just I just want to make sure that we're looking at all possible funding sources and be with that, but it sounds like that'll be a more full discussion for a later time. Totally fine. And then just I'm super excited about this project. I'm so glad they're moving forward, and I really appreciate all the work.
Okay, thank you. That's my level.
Thanks, Mayor. So on the project uses and the dollars that we have assigned, so I would assume this is site development, but the GMP is five point six five. Is that pulling from other buckets there, or like, why is this higher than what we have?
Yes, there's there's a few things that are in different buckets overall. For example, as part of GMP one here, there is a structure flex contract to get the design work going for the canopy itself. That's about a say roughly fifty-seven thousand dollar number that will then come off, and that would be included in the farmer's market bucket. So so the bid package isn't broken out in the same way that this project uses is currently. That's something that we could look at, but part of it was some of the site work where that's at, and some of the other offsite improvements and the site development do kind of overlap a little bit. So you can see the offsite improvements there. That 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 number does include the main storm sewer running through through the site, which is a part of GMP one here. But it also includes Johnson and Green, Johnson and Third Street, which haven't been bid out yet.
And then just on the the bidding process, how is this different than how like we do a public bid versus, you know, like when we actually have work that we send out and that hits, you know, out in the public versus just maybe just explain to us how this bidding process is different than if we would send something out as we would for other services in the city?
So the city uses a system as well, similar to Building Connected. It's just a different electronic bidding system. And Michael, I'm going to get the name wrong off the top of my head on on our system. Just escaping me.
CDN, there's a variety of different bid packages and softwares that contractors tap into. I I think the the parallel here is we have a general contractor who is doing that bid environment. So they're they're soliciting subcontractor bids, whereas the city is essentially that general contractor. We're soliciting primary contractors to submit bids, and then they're finding all their subcontractors. But we don't see that work behind the scenes between the primary and subs. That that kind of example makes some sense to you. So as opposed to city being the GC and finding primary bids, we've got a GC that is the primary, and they're finding their own bids through the same type of process, just different systems.
Building Connected is actually like that's internal to McCown Gordon, like their their subtrades, correct?
It is not, not just internal.
Building Connected is very similar. It's just an online platform that we use. So we can distribute the documents. We can receive questions, issue RFI. It's a good communication platform, and it's also used for the solicitation.
And then are we are we required to use prevailing wage on this? Or is it are these union contractors or?
Yeah, these are non-union contractors. Yeah, so we we are signatory and and to the carpenters, but this is all carpenters don't fall within.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. That's all right. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. You refresh my memory with the CIP money, the four point three, and I think you mentioned Johnson. Those you just refreshed my memory. What projects were pulling the money from the CIP source, what those projects are?
That is the Stormwater Project, as well as the Third Street Improvement Project. So Third Street has a project that carries on from currently from where Third Street Streetscape ends all the way out to two ninety-one. And so with this project moving ahead of the rest of that schedule, it makes sense to go ahead and complete that with this project, that phase. So there's some funds coming from that project. And then the main storm sewer line, as well as the rest of the storm drainage in this area that bisects the property, that all is is a CIP funded as well.
Were tho and I don't remember. So were those moved up? When did we move those up to the front of the line in terms of the CIP project that we're going to work on?
They were included in the CIP in last year. I I know they're in this year's CIP as well.
I just know we, you know, sometimes we've got them a year out, two years out, three years out, and I just don't. I wish I could tell you. I looked at it in detail, and I but yeah.
Yeah, these these projects, including downtown master plant or this Market Plaza project, were all in the adopted capital improvement program. And so were those funding. Some of them might have been to be determined, but the general scope of all those projects were in there for this current fiscal year, so it's fine to spend on those. The Stormwater Project falls under the twenty seventeen CIP sales tax for flood mitigation, so we obviously experienced flooding out here, and it's due to inadequate public infrastructure. So it was already a project, you know, that fit that scope. Moving ahead makes a lot of sense. And Third Street, same source, twenty seventeen CIP sales tax identified project. It was already in there. I think we're advancing some of that work a little bit, but it was already in the adopted CIP. It's just being advanced a little bit ahead of where the rest of Third Street was going to go on its schedule, if that makes sense. And then and then we are having conversations as we're pre-planning for the next CIP. I know Councilmember Shields admitted Johnson, whether or not that could be added as another project, and that's something staff's looking into.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Park. And Mr. Eelm, just as we like any other construction project, and we call this guaranteed max price one, but that price can be adjusted. There can be change orders. This isn't truly an absolute ceiling, or help me understand if.
So that there can be, but the the change order risk is really limited on our end, and it is more be more as a result of a change in direction that we provide that changes the scope significantly there. So through the through the SAM at risk process with the guaranteed max price, that there is a little bit more flexibility and a little bit more ability to work with the contractor and the design team to make those funds work for the project as a whole overall. And the risk of the change orders is is kind of shifted a little bit. So there's still a possibility, but the change order risk is less than, say, in a design bid build project where if you have an extra foot of pipe installed, design bid build project, then pay for that per foot basis.
So I mean, is the risk that, and I think you said change in scope. So if we changed what we're doing for layman's terms, just we change direction or change the project in some way, that's when change order would come into play, and of course, they would need to readdress the price because it wasn't in the scope of what we had initially agreed to.
An example could be, let's say, we we decided that we wanted to add the second floor back to that's going to be a change order.
When you and this is really more of a question, well, it's both for me and for a viewer. When you say early, the early civil package, that's a term we don't talk about in our day to day talk, but how would you describe that for a layman or viewer?
Yeah, so that's the underground utility work, really, that needs to be done ahead of the main site work and building prep that that needs to occur. So these are necessary underground utilities that have to be relocated, upsized and constructed. And they're they're fully designed, and they're able to proceed, and they necessarily need to proceed ahead of the building construction in order to make way and make room construction to occur.
This is the early, this is the ugly part of construction.
That depends on your perspective. I'm a civil, so.
And then, as I am understanding how you've laid out this today, and we're looking now at that the forty-one nine, we are going to revisit this conversation and talk about securing additional funds that ultimately feed into this this number. So what we've done, we're talking about today is five, I can't remember the exact number, five plus million. The the balance of our conversation is going to take us up to the forty-one, forty-two range when we talk about this in the coming months.
That's correct.
It's big.
Big project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Eelm. And Mayor, I think those were my questions for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Level.
Just so one more question. So when we're, so the construction manager at risk is working with designer to help kind of figure out costs as they're going, right? So we're making these estimates. Are these numbers shared in the bidding process? So like if we're estimating it's four, you know, four point seven four one for this, where I would assume the general contractor is using their knowledge, kind of understanding of pricing. But then when it goes out to bid, like, is that number presented to them? Like, hey, this is what we're shooting for? Or how does that typically work?
No, we don't share our cost analysis with them. No, no. Yeah, when we go out, we, you know, to a competitive environment, we want their best price. Kind of create that environment for them to, yeah, make it the lowest cost we can.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you. So you're saying if we get these first red and second red mobilize utilities will happen on ten eighteen? Hope ten twenty-five.
Mobilization will happen. So when when mobilization occurs, McCown Gordon will start to be on site. And they'll they'll get their site set up, get fencing up, get a construction trailer out and get equipment delivered, and they will have to order structures. So there's going to be some lead time for materials to be able to get on site, and but they'll start work with what they can, what what they have.
But doesn't snow? They can dig in. October. Sounds great. Councilmember Prior.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you know about, and I know that I've talked to you about this privately, but not publicly. Do you know about when Green Street will be shut down? I guess it will be permanently once it shuts down, right?
Harlan Klein, sorry, you with McCown Gordon. Green Street, we don't have the design yet on that. But I it's going to be somewhere. It will fall within the project, so it won't extend the project, even though we don't have the design. But it'll be, I'm guessing sometime, probably late twenty-four is my guess.
Okay, so that's a lot later than what I was thinking. So, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the design and see how that works out with how we're, you know, mobilized with our site now, so.
Okay, thank you.
I I will say from our perspective, that is a very critical date that we want to identify as soon as possible so we can provide as much notice as possible as close. So as soon as we have that, we will be providing as much public notice as possible on.
Okay, thank you very much, because I have been getting that question a lot from parents and teachers and staff, just everyone at Lee Summit Elementary. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey, it's a lot of work. I know what went in behind this. So thank you, Mr. Eelm. Thank you, McCown Gordon. Here as well. Oh, and our architect's here, too. Were you a part of this? Yeah. A little bit. Guys don't have further discussion, then I will go ahead and close this out by having Councilmember, I believe, Demoral read the bill. Councilmember Demoral, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one eight nine?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to advance the second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one eight nine, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to an agreement between the City of Lee Summit, Missouri and McCall Gordon Construction Company, who set guaranteed maximum price one for the downtown Market Plaza project in the amount of five million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Thank you. We have a motion to move to second reading, bill number twenty-three dash one eight nine by Councilmember Demoral, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? None, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes nine zero. One more reading, and we will start mobilizing. Very good. Thank you all. We only have a couple of other ordinances to go through. These are second ordinance, second readings. Councilmember Redson, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one seven four?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption of bill number twenty-three dash one seventy-four, ordinance approving a plan for chapter one hundred development project for the Greens at Woodschapel Apartments project.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one seven four by Councilmember Redson, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Discussion? Yes, Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to continue to vote no on these. I don't think the the projects are all together. They're they're good projects. I'm just still, I'm struggling with the numbers we're coming up with. That continued delta there. I'm wondering if we're where we need to be. I know that we certainly following a pattern that we've been in for some time. But again, just I'm I'm struggling with that, and I need to perhaps do a little more thought and looking into it. Wanted to make a comment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Does pass eight one. Thank you all. And then Councilmember Prior, would you please read bill number twenty-three dash one seven five?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for adoption, bill number twenty-three dash one seven five, an ordinance approving a plan for chapter one hundred development project for the Douglas Station Apartments project.
All right, thank you. We have a motion to adopt bill number twenty-three dash one seven five by Councilmember Prior, seconded by Mayor Potem Lopez. Discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. All votes are in. Please record the vote. Passes seven two. Thank you all. And that takes us to committee reports. Yes, Councilmember Redson.
Thank you, Mayor. We have CEDC Wednesday, October eleventh, five o'clock right here. And you might have noticed that we don't have council next Tuesday.
Good, good point. Thank you. Councilmember Shields.
We'll have a finance and budget meeting Monday, October second, here at four o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, council comments. Yes, Councilmember Level.
Mayor, um, just something that's been weighing on me and, and, and trying to make sure that we're utilizing the best processes, um, when it comes to construction and specifically projects that we're tasked with, with building and, and being good stewards. Um, you know, I, I don't necessarily have a problem with the construction manager at risk, um, process, but I know that there's some other municipalities out there that really have come up with better solutions that allow us as a city, city to, to get out to market, um, and, and really make sure that we're getting the most competitive bids for the projects. And so I just, um, I don't know if there's anything that comes or gets born out of this, but, um, I've seen some other municipalities with some systems and processes in place um, that make sure that we're covering a wide range of trades and making sure we're being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, especially in today's construction environment, so, um, just kind of wanted to throw that out there, thanks.
Thank you, um, Mr. Downey, we, we really need to, um, explore and look at best practices for that, like we do everything. I know that we've, we've had discussions and Mr. Elam talked about a little bit of that tonight, as well as McCown Gordon, but, um, I think we all, I can't speak for everybody, but I, I support what Councilmember Level's saying and in that, um, we need to just be sure that we're being as, uh, open with the, the processes as at all possible. Because we always talk about transparency, uh, we, we have to lead by example and I just want to be assured that, that we are exploring all options.
Agreed, um, we heard a little bit of that tonight with the systems that McCown Gordon versus, versus what we're typically using, so maybe a little more in-depth review of that, just to kind of help better understand how that's being done would be helpful.
You got a great staff to look into that, so appreciate it. Councilmember Felker.
Thank you, Mayor, I, uh, thank you, Mayor, um, I'm just, I'm, and this may be a bit late in the game, but I'm going back to our conversation about the exploratory committee for the, um, our future with economic development. And I'm looking at the committee formation, I know we've had a conversation about chamber members being involved and I expressed my, my, um, my opinion that I think engagement with the E D C board is I think a critical way of finding a path forward, uh, with, as well as with the chamber board for that matter. Um, and I realize that doing that as a full slate is unwieldy and perhaps not, uh, reasonable. So anyway, I, saying all that, um, the way that this is spelled out in the report indicates that the mayor and council would, would appoint these, um, members, at least would be appointed by the mayor and city council as it's worded here. You've asked for our input and I would hope that then the chamber and the E D C are active in thinking about who they would want to, to recommend to do that. I think in fairness to those organizations, it would, in my mind, almost seem incumbent upon us to really look to them to provide the recommendations, uh, from those boards as to who should be a part of this. And I think doing so allows us to really give our community and those organizations in particular the very visible way of saying we're collaborating to come to a solution that everyone is playing a part in. I think if we just appoint them and it's our choice, it just, it leads, I think, some to reasonably say we're controlling the outcome. I think that's a, I don't want to be in that position. I'd, I'd want to be able to give them the opportunity to say, you know, of our, and we didn't talk about how many from each of these organizations, but, uh, so that, that's, I think we want to our collaboration and some of the other things, Mayor, that you mentioned. And that's just one of the things that came to my mind is I walked, I walked out of the room and kind of thinking about this, thought, well, we really should give them the opportunity to say, well, we'd like, obviously probably be the chairs of each of those, um, boards, it would make sense because that's who leads them, um, you know, and whoever else, but.
No, I'm, I'm going to just tell you that we're going to be talking about this for a long time before I appoint the chair of the E D C board or the vice chair, who I have spent fourteen months of my life, uh, trying to work with despite whatever narrative, uh, that they want to, to tell others. There are more than enough wonderful people in this community, civic-minded people that we can choose from. And this, this council chose to take the path we did fourteen months ago as a board, as a council. And now we're going to say, well, we're going to, we're going to, uh, take whoever it is they, that's, that's, that's why we were, we're here tonight, because their chair and their vice chair did not want to rework or renegotiate or try to, they've made no solution, they've offered no solutions in fourteen months. And I have been crystal clear that, that, that it's always been on the table, always been on the table. But, you know, they can try to blame me if they want, they can try to go around me, but I beg of you as my council members, don't let them go around us. And telling, uh, an organization that they, they get to tell us who we put on a, on a exploratory committee, um, we can collaborate and come to an agreement and agree upon someone, you know, with them. But, um, I just, I don't know, you're not just taking power away from me, you're taking the power away from ourselves, all of us. I'm fine if you all want to try to work out something with the E D C, but, um, after what was stated tonight, I don't even know why you're saying you would want the chair.
And frankly, it's not a, not a matter of, um, I state that an organization should be obliged or have the opportunity to provide its leader to represent itself. And, um, that's why I would say the chair, not because of Mr. Coats or what he said or anything like that. Nation that wants to represent itself should be able to present its leader, just like outside of our community or within, to represent council. So, again, my reason in bringing this back up was because I felt like we want to avoid the appearance of determining an outcome as a council. As much as we are going to be a part of that decision-making by who comes onto that board. And so giving those organizations, which we've all just stated have good members, the opportunity to choose among their members, and they may not choose to send the chair, maybe they don't, I don't know. That's, I just think giving them the, their members still support them, they still have donors behind them, so that's, those are my thoughts and input, I think even.
You're just bringing politics into this, it's, it's, you're not helping us move forward with, with this conversation. You're, you're allowing politics to come into play. And if we want to have more input, I don't even like the word control, but I even heard that numerous times tonight, that we want to have more of a say as a council, then why are we going to give up and allow people that want to divide us to be a part of the exploratory committee? We need to, we, we need to make these decisions, that's what I heard tonight, we need to make these decisions. Not the chairs of the organizations that, um, that want to say that there's some other agenda from the mayor or any council member.
My sentiments still remain, and they're similar to what I said when I talked about the D M O. And we had a kind of similar conversation was giving them that opportunity, trusting them as members of the community. I realize there's a lot of history, I've not been in those meetings with you, Mayor. Um, I know you've brought back information to us and I, I can respect that process and everything there, again, like, that's part of partnering and collaborating with them. They, giving them the opportunity to, to provide, you know, at a minimum recommendations. I think that's, I think that at a minimum is appropriate. Um, if, if the union of council is to say that we still hold an ultimate say, I mean, I, I think knowing what they would recommend would be valuable. Because that gives them the chance to deliberate too. I mean, each of those boards, I presume, would meet in a relatively short order, say, this was just discussed as council and what do we say about it and what, what part do we want to play? So, uh, again.
I've, I've, I'll just be very honest and direct, I've asked the chair to step aside three times publicly so that we could move forward. He said he would, but he never, he never has, so, um, I'll take my same position on the D M O, they can make a recommendation and if it's someone that's not confront, uh, confrontational or, um, or controversial, then maybe, maybe, uh, maybe we'll pick them. I know that they did choose someone, uh, that was, they had good applicants for the D M O that will be brought forward for the council. So there was no, there's not going to be any problems there. And we've never really had problems with these types of things until all of a sudden now, um, you know, we've got a situation where they, they don't want to be, they haven't wanted to be held accountable, they haven't wanted to work with us. And here we are tonight, trying to finally move forward. I feel like I heard clearly from the council that you want to move forward, but now we want to go back and allow the chairs to try to negotiate with us. I don't know, well, let's, let's listen to other council members, see what they say. Prior?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I just want to say, I always like hearing Councilmember Felker's perspective just because he does offer a different perspective a lot of times than, than I feel like a lot of, than what a lot of us are thinking. So, thank you for your perspective. Um, and then I also was wondering if we could address the public comment earlier that was talking about us going over what state law states, just so it's public and out in the open, if, if it's an appropriate time to discuss that, so nobody thinks we're doing anything behind closed doors or illegally.
Here, Mr. Bushak or Ms. Whirtleman, do, Ms. Whirtleman, you look like you're ready to speak to this, please?
Eddie Whirtleman, Finance Director, uh, you're referring to the gentleman that was talking about the tax levy setting process potentially being illegal? Excuse me, um, so it clearly is not illegal. We are required by law to submit our levy calculation to the state auditor for review and certification. And, uh, so it is reviewed by both Cass and Jackson County clerks, um, and then by the state auditor's office before it is finally certified. Uh, the calculations that he was running through, I didn't catch that all in detail, but it sounded like he was doing a very rough approximation. And, uh, the state auditor requires a very detailed pro forma calculation where we plug in numbers according to the formulas that they have in their documents and it calculates it for us, then that is what gets, uh, reviewed by the state auditor for certification. So we would not be permitted to do an illegal process, clearly.
Okay, and I know that, but I wanted it to just be publicly said, thank you very much.
What was your other question, do you have another one? Is that it?
I can come up with another one, but I don't have another one right now.
All right, Councilmember Shields.
Thank you, Mayor, um, so I had been thinking also about, um, the composition of the study committee, whatever we're calling it for the element, and there'd been a lot of discussion about the role of council on that. And something I wanted to say is I thought maybe the mayor and Mayor Potem would be good representatives, that that would be a, the mayor plus a member of council, and also I know that very aware, I think, of, of a lot of the sentiments that have been shared on the dial. Representative of our interests. And then, as far as who would be appointed from other organizations, I would certainly defer to the judgment of the mayor. I, I think having a fresh start is really important and not, I think having stakeholders in the room is really important, but also having some, maybe some fresh voices and fresh perspectives and not rehashing the old sessions, like I would love to see maybe some of the, uh, investors from the E D C, you know, some of the larger local businesses been involved in the past, having their voices, not, not just necessarily members of the board, but folks that are their stake, so, um, but I don't have a whole list of names for you. I would, I would, uh, defer to you on that, but I would certainly support having kind of some fresh faces and voices.
Thank you. Councilmember Redson?
Well, you asked for different opinions, so everybody all have a different opinion. Um, I was ready to throw the E D C off the list when he put it up on the screen and because they've been ineffective for at least eight years. So I was kind of thinking, why are we bothering with this? They didn't produce, that's why we stopped funding them, so why would we bother having, having them on there? Um, and then when the chair comes and basically takes a shot at the mayor and a shot at the executive director of the chamber in a public meeting, I mean, having him on this, uh, committee is, he's already basically said it's not going to be productive for him to be there. I mean, that right there told me he would not be helpful. Um, if we have to have them, if that's the consensus, I would say, you know, I can think of two or three past chairs that would be, be really good and have really valuable input. Um, as far as recently, I'm not so sure that's true, but thank you.
Thank you. Else want to show me in? Mayor Potem?
Well, I, I thought this conversation had ended, but yes, I'll give you my opinion as well. I, I'll just echo Councilmember Edson's comment, um. I mean, I, I'm all about transparency and collaboration and giving a little grace, but she's absolutely right, when you come before this public body and you make those kind of personal attacks, I, I don't, I don't think that individual should be part of any committee and, and it's in the best interest of this community. So, uh, I, I stand by what Councilmember Edson proposed, so thank you.
You? Um, I do, I will just state for the record that, um, the chamber, I, I can go any direction, I can go with a new U, uh, E D O. Um, I could even, I would even, even though he said it wouldn't be best for all, I could take, I could even consider taking it in-house if I, if we really thought it through, uh, because I have that much confidence in staff. And it's possible that we could work with the E D C, but people, uh, board members would have to step aside and I've been, I've stated that clearly to them, to, certain board members would have to step aside and we, to allow for us to work with the other board members, uh, that are willing to have conversations. So a lot's on the table, um, I think we let the exploratory committee help us make that final decision. I was trying to get that off of our back, especially my back. Um, putting, you know, the recommendation into, um, the community's hands, business people, uh, stakeholders, so. I think we should just send me your names and let's see what we come up with and we can hash this out in another meeting. Can do it, I, I know we can do it, we've done it before. Yes, Councilmember Prior?
So when you say send you the names, you want us to go ahead and send you names?
Yeah, I'll send you an email.
Okay.
I'll say, hey, here, here, and look at, and I'll even write down some of the, the criteria, um, that they had put in the, I'll just take it straight from the the presentation you saw tonight and just say, uh, and, and there's numerous ways we can do this, we want to be public about it, um, so once we get all the names, we might have to discuss, discuss, um, composition more. Can't do that via email, but I can, I can take your, your names and nominations. You never know, I mean, I'm telling you, some people might not want to do it, it's, right? It's been, people have pulled back and that's part of the problem is the board full of wonderful people, but then they're a lot like me, are their peacemakers and they don't want to make decisions to move us forward. I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Prior, I mean, um, so, um, it's, it's been very difficult. I thought it was a, it was a fairly good conversation, I'm not excited because I don't, because I know there's still unknowns and we got to forge through this, push through this with another few meetings on it. So.
I do want to say, I do want to move us forward, but I am a peacemaker and I don't like conflict, I don't. like conflict, I don't like for there to be conflict, I think, yeah. Like, when we went to Councilmember Felker's talk at church, I, that, I, it was wonderful because that, yeah, I don't like there to be little fires everywhere.
Alright, thank you. Alright, I think that takes us to staff roundtable.
Just a couple things, Mayor, mentioned no council meeting next week, but we do have some, we do have road closures, speaking of Green Street road closure down in the future for the project, but we do have some, those are posted on the website, on our Public Works page, but one that may be more impactful, it'll, it'll occur nightly, this would be at the intersection of Chipman Road and Pryor Road, so, you know, we've got Streets West Pryor and Summit Woods Crossing there. That would be occurring, though, nightly, between 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM, beginning Monday, October 2nd, and take place for two to three weeks. So, there's gonna be some detours through that intersection during that timeframe, that's to replace Water Main in that location. And then, another reminder of October 3rd, then, next Tuesday, is that public hearing on the design of the M291 North and 50 Highway interchange right here in the council chambers between the hours of 4:30 to 7:00 PM, where the public can come look at the design plans, ask questions regarding that project that's in the works as well. If you're not able to make that in person, they are, MoDOT is offering online public viewing of the plans and you can ask questions through that as well. That'll be taking place between October 3rd through Tuesday, October 17th, so there's an online way to view that project as well and offer comments or questions. That's it, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, thank you. I have one last comment. Last week, we had a citizen say something not becoming of our finest, men and women in blue, and it's always a really tough situation because, you know, I don't, didn't think it was appropriate in, in the context of the conversation, but I definitely wanna make sure that our public safety, police, fire, and all our employees know that we, you know, we trust you and we appreciate you and we don't, we don't just believe everything we hear, it's, it's just that in this environment, it's very difficult to refute. You know, when someone's giving their opinions and such, we've had a lot of public commenters over the years and we don't necessarily respond to every single thing that they're saying, and so, I, I went that path of not addressing it, but I definitely will try to make sure that I'm redirecting people whenever they go down that path. So, anyway, Chief Forbes and, and the rest of our team, my apologies for that. Okay, with that said, it is, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at 9:25.